Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Technology. If you would like to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this point, please silence all electronic devices. Please silence all electronic devices. No one may approach the dais at any point during this hearing. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our oversight hearing on the MyCity platform. I'm Councilmember Gutierrez, Chair of the Committee on Technology. Today, we'll be discussing New York City's MyCity platform in Intro 821 sponsored by Councilmember Holden in relation to the creation of a centralized mobile application for accessing city services. This hearing will aim to examine MyCity platform's delayed launch, its functionality, the product roadmap, and concerns about efficiency and cost effectiveness, as well as the exciting potential. Since our earliest meetings in this committee, MyCity was presented as a centerpiece of Adams Administration's vision, a one-stop portal meant to simplify access to city services for all New Yorkers. However, years later, we're still seeking clarity on core aspects of the project. We've heard a lot about what MyCity could be, but today I expect to hear concrete, actionable plans, clear timelines, and specific deliverables, not just broad promises. This is one of the only public forums where we, both representatives and constituents, are getting updates on MyCity. If this platform is truly designed to serve New Yorkers, we need to talk about it like it's a real product, what it does today, and what we can expect in the next month, six months, and a year. I fully support the vision. A portal that allows New Yorkers to easily apply for and manage services is absolutely essential. But building this system requires more than consultants. It needs meaningful engagement with both everyday New Yorkers who will use this platform and the city agencies responsible for delivering services. Without that collaboration, we risk falling short of the platform's potential, not to mention millions of taxpayer dollars wasted while vendors profit from their contracts on New Yorkers' data. We are here to listen, but I want to be clear, we also need specifics. How are you involving New Yorkers and the agencies responsible for services? What measures are in place to ensure security, reliability, and privacy protection? How is this being beta-tested? And what are the next steps for expanding beyond the limited services currently offered? With many agencies now interconnected, a single recording mistake by one could have a cascading impact across many areas of New Yorkers' lives. MyCity is not just an experiment or a lofty idea. It should deliver on its promise to make life easier for New Yorkers. That requires treating this project with urgency, precision, and transparency. I'd like to thank the Technology Committee staff, Policy Analyst Charles Kim and Eric Brown, Ledge Council Irene Bayofsky, and my Chief of Staff Anya Lehrer for their work to put together this hearing and our repeated follow-ups on MyCity over the past years. I'd like to recognize the Technology Committee members, Councilmembers Palladino and Holden. And now I want to turn to Councilmember Holden. He'll be giving some remarks on his legislation.
Thank you very much, Chair Gutierrez, and members of the Technology Committee for the opportunity to testify on Intro 821, which aims to make city services more accessible by creating a centralized mobile app. As a frequent user of 311, I've seen firsthand how technology makes reporting issues like illegal parking, dumping, dangerous trees, potholes, and other city services quick and efficient. I introduced this bill two sessions ago and even discussed the concept with then-Borough President Adams when he was running for mayor. He ultimately created the MyCity portal based on this very idea. However, while the MyCity is a step in the right direction, it needs to go further. My bill envisions a broader, more comprehensive application that would not only provide the services we see on 311, but also allow New Yorkers to pay parking tickets and property taxes or assess vital or access vital resources like their HRA benefits. It would be a central hub simplifying access to all city services right from a smartphone, thereby reducing bureaucratic hurdles and making life more convenient for all New Yorkers. Other cities like Los Angeles, Philadelphia, and Chicago have begun expanding their 311 apps to achieve this. But New York City can be the first to create the ultimate one-stop-shop application for everyone to use. While the MyCity portal is a good start, we need to, we need a combination of 311, NYC Pay, and MyCity. And that's, that's the main thrust of this bill. This is about making our government more responsive and accessible to the people, leveraging the technology we already have. We have the blueprint with 311, and it is time to build on that foundation. Intro 821 is a common sense solution that will not only streamline interactions with city agencies, but also greatly improve the experience of navigating government services for all New Yorkers, making it more efficient and user-friendly. I look forward to hearing from the administration on this bill, and I want to thank again the Chair for allowing me to talk about the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Today, we'll hear testimonies from the New York City Office of Technology and Innovation, OTI, followed by testimonies from the public. Now, I want to welcome Chief Technology Officer Commissioner Matt Fraser, Deputy Commissioner of Strategic Initiatives Ruby Choi, nice to meet you, and Associate Commissioner of Applications Engineering Amrit Singh.
Good afternoon, everyone. And before we begin with the testimony from the administration, I kindly request everyone to raise their right hands. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth and respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Matt Fraser?
I do.
Deputy Commissioner Ruby Choi?
I do.
Associate Commissioner Singh?
Thank you. You might begin with your testimony.
Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez and members of the City Council Committee on Technology. My name is Matthew Fraser, and I'm the Chief Technology Officer for the City of New York, and I lead the Office of Technology and Innovation, OTI. With me, I have Ruby Choi, OTI's Deputy Commissioner of Strategic Initiatives, and Amrit Singh, OTI's Associate Commissioner of Application Engineering. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on MyCity Portal. We're extremely proud of the progress we've made so far, and we're eager to discuss the future of the project and its impact on New Yorkers. The execution of MyCity has been one of the administration's top priority. Our vision for MyCity is to improve, is to provide New Yorkers with a user-friendly, one-stop-shop that makes it easier to check eligibility, apply for, and track city services and benefits online with a single account. Consolidating and streamlining New Yorkers' interactions with the city is our primary goal. The portal eliminates the need for New Yorkers to navigate the city's vast bureaucracy to know which agencies to turn when they need help and provides a single sign-on to eliminate the need to input the same information repeatedly to access different services. On the backend, we strive to enable agencies to design and deploy solutions quickly and cost-effectively on the platform. This portal has been and will continue to be built, built out incrementally with a phase planned for conducting research, designing, developing, user testing, and launching additional individual services. In March of 2023, the first phase of the MyCity became available at mycity.nyc.gov and launched a rollout of a childcare subsidy portal. This was the first identified priority in the MERS report on accessible, equitable, high-quality, affordable, a blueprint for childcare and early childhood education in New York City, and was later codified at, by the City Council through Local Law 103 of 2022. It was built in collaboration with the Administration for Children's Services, New York City Schools, the Department of Social Services, and New York State's Office of Children and Family Services. Prior to the launch of this portal, New Yorkers seeking childcare subsidies had to fill out a paper application and mail it to the agency, a less efficient, outdated process that caused families excessive time and effort. Now approximately 75% of all new applications for childcare assistance are submitted through MyCity. Additionally, in March 2024, we expanded the portal to allow families to complete their annual recertification in MyCity, further increasing accessibility for families across New York City. Nearly 26,000 families have determined, has been determined eligible for childcare assistance as a result of applying through this user-friendly, easy-to-access electronic application. We are confident it will help many more families in the city to, to the city's 8 million investments earlier this year to continue to supporting this important resource. As we work in collaboration with City Council to invest and amplify information about childcare and early childhood education, we expect many more families to be positively impacted. Since the launch of MyCity, we've also focused our efforts on reaching New Yorkers and helping them connect, helping connect them to economic opportunity. After extensive user research, we launched a new business portal in collaboration with Small Business Services last September. The business portal assesses businesses, business operators, including entrepreneurs who are opening a business for the first time, navigate the process of applying for various licenses and permits in a simple, step-by-step form. The MyCity Business Portal also features a beta-phase AI-powered chatbot to help users quickly and easily find information, a feature we continue to approve. Over 141,000 users have visited the site, and more than 19,000 individuals have queried the chatbot. We'll keep improving the chatbot's functionality on an ongoing basis. Over the last year, we've launched a redesigned jobs website to improve New Yorkers' job-seeking and recruiting experiences. This phase of the MyCity, this phase of MyCity has been executed in collaboration with the MERS Office of Talent and Workforce Development, New York City Opportunity, Department of Citywide Administrative Services, Small Business Services, and other agency partners. The Jobs NYC Talent Portal unifies the New, the New York City job seeker experience, modernizing how job seekers find and apply for jobs with both private and public employers, leveraging curated online resources, up-to-date training information, and career affairs. This endeavor has led to significant engagement, with email sign-ups increasing over 79% in the past year, doubling the city's job application rate, and increasing the monthly user, users to the website by 326%. We're proud of what we've built so far, which has been a culmination of more than two years of OTI's collaborative work with our agency partners and over a dozen MWB vendors and members of the committee, community who participated in user research and testing. That said, we aim to accomplish so much more with MyCity to integrate more applications and services into our simple, easy-to-use portal. Building off the foundation so far, we plan to leverage the information that MyCity account holders have been provided to inform them of other benefits they are likely eligible for, in addition to easily screening for, applying for, and tracking the status of services they're seeking. A key component of making this a reality for many city benefit application processes is providing agencies with an integration playbook that would allow them to integrate new or existing applications into the MyCity, into MyCity at their own pace. As we continue to assess new phases for MyCity, we're happy to discuss what these may entail and continue and keep the committee included in the process along the way. Finally, I will turn to the legislation on today's docket. 0821-2024 by Councilmember Holden. We would, would require the creation of a centralized application for accessing city services, including the ability for users to schedule appointments for city services, reminders for such appointments, and the ability to send and receive messages to such agency. As we've demonstrated, we focus our efforts on a set of services available via MyCity and intend to continue to make other city services available in the future, addressing those that are most in demand and that would benefit most from the MyCity model. Further, we can talk through the technical aspects of the portal as it exists today with respects to web versus mobile, presence, privacy, and cybersecurity. While we appreciate the Council's desire to enshrine the MyCity portal in law, it is important to note, as proposed, the bill would impact the way that we've built so far and may hinder the ability to implement our work while maintaining the flexibility in the future. We'd like to hear about the intent of legislation from the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I will now take Councilmember questions, any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, everyone from the agency for testifying today. I'm going to just start off with some general questions about the app. I know it's been, or the portal, excuse me. It's been a little while since we've focused on it. And Commissioner, you, in your opening testimony, talked a lot about the, specifically the, the benefit to childcare and the amount of families that have applied, the amount of folks that have accessed subsidies that maybe they wouldn't have before, which I think is great. What I'd like to spend some time on is if you can share some specifics of the current phase we're in and the next phase. So I want to start with, if you can share, what are, what, how far along, in your opinion, in your opinion, is MyCity in, in the rollout, right? It launched in March of 2023 officially, open, accessible to all, phase one. What phase are we in? And what can you tell me about kind of how that rollout has, has gone?
Sure. So when you look at when we started the process, we stepped in in January of 2022. Just reminding Council of the climate at that time, we came in off the heels of COVID, and in fact, we were looking at potentially another shutdown. At the time, city's job numbers were down, and we had a task ahead of rebuilding not just the business community, but getting people back to work. One of the things that we saw as a critical need for those that have families, getting back to work is something that would be difficult to do without having access to childcare in some meaningful way. So what we did was we took a look across the city services and made a determination on what we would prioritize. And when we looked at childcare in particular, the process to get subsidized childcare was abysmal. It required a paper form that you would have to send to one of three separate agencies, and then those agencies would then make a determination and-
And I'm sorry to interrupt. This is just to clarify. This was family seeking childcare that would qualify for a subsidy, correct?
That is correct. That is correct. That would qualify for subsidy. They would have to send it to one of three separate agencies. Those agencies would then make a determination. And if you applied to the wrong program, you would get a rejection letter that would require you to submit a paper form again. So then when we looked at that process, it was very simple to see, like, it was something that was critical, critical to the economic vitality of New York City, so we determined to go in that direction. Now, in doing that, one of the reasons why we picked that as a test case because it gave us the capability not just to see what it would be like working between agencies, but also what it would look like working across partners that extended beyond the city. So in order to get the first phase of this done, it required work not just with New York City, but New York State, and also with our federal partners to make sure that we were complying with all regulatory requirements. And we were able to do that within a year span, which is, which brought us to first phase. As we entered into the second phase, one of the things that we, we wanted to ensure was that we not only continued to build, but we gave agencies the capability to build with us at the same time. So we work, so we're currently focused on building a common services portal. And what that common services will do, it'll basically mean for anyone that's interested in integrating a system into the MyCity umbrella, authentication, the way you log into a system will be the same across all systems. It'll have a common framework for how data is stored. One of the things that we have, and that's, that's a tragedy, is there's a lot of data within the city's estate, but there's not much context applied to that data. So if I look at how an agency looks at a person, there isn't a common understanding between all agencies of how we identify a person, a place, or a business. And because of that, when you try to use the city's data and maximize that, those touchpoints to see how we can further enrich them, because of that complexity, it makes it very difficult to do so because we don't have a common understanding of what those things are. So this, this phase that we're currently in establishes a framework that says, this is how we identify people going forward. This is how we identify buildings going forward. This is how we identify business going, going forward across the entire city. And now that gives us the capability to reach through all of the systems that exist and start to weave together a picture of what those interactions looks like between those that interact with government, both from an individual, a business, or a property perspective. And that phase, this current phase will give us the ability to springboard other agencies that are building systems to integrate into this common framework, which will make delivery much faster. So the thing for us is that we want to make sure that as we deploy, we continue to build services that are not only important to New Yorkers, but we build them in a coherent way so that they can continue to layer on, on top of each other versus building individual things and trying to link them together later. This is one of the reasons why most large application development efforts, when they get off the ground, they start building a system, someone's building something else, and then they have to spend millions of dollars to integrate those two things together. So we're trying to avoid all that in this current phase.
Thank you. And so in this current phase, however, you're not looking, you are looking to continue to grow and improve the existing areas where MyCity is linking New Yorkers, so childcare, jobs, benefits, and small businesses.
That's correct. So when you think about, unless, that's, one of the things that we also mentioned in the initial testimony was about benefits and making sure that people have easier access to benefits. So there's a benefits or a benefits portal online where you can put in information and get high-level eligibility information about what you may be eligible for. It's disjointed. We've brought it together into the MyCity-
Is that, are you referring to Access HRA?
I'm sorry?
Are you referring to Access HRA?
No. So Access HRA is, is a services portal, but outside of Access HRA, there's an actual benefits engine where you can put information in and see what benefits you're eligible for across the city. As part of this current phase, we're building that into the MyCity process. And what, the, the best way I can put, put this is, you know, at home, you may get a credit card mailer that says you're pre-approved for a credit card, up to a certain threshold, applied by this date, and this is what you're guaranteed, pre-approved. Now, for benefits, if we have information about what your household status is, if we have information about your dependent status, and we have information about income, we can do a better, we can do eligibility assessments based on that information, and we can proactively serve you with other programs that you may be eligible for. So although you are applying for childcare, and although the systems may be disjointed, while you apply for childcare, do you also know that you're also eligible for these things? And here are links to get access to that stuff. So having a common way that we look at people, a common way that we look at businesses, a common way that we look at properties, it gives us the capabilities to look at that information and make some determinations on what ways to best serve those people.
And the data that you, it, it, in this phase, where you're looking at the context of, of all the data that the city has, are you looking specifically at data collected through existing accounts through MyCity, the search engine? Where else are you pulling New Yorkers' data from to start making those assessments?
Yeah. So as it stands right now, the primary input is that we have two ways that we look at information. When you apply for social service benefits, whether that's food or, or, food or financial assistance, there is, in the background, we have an engine that collects a lot of that information. Same thing with childcare. So now we're unifying those worlds together and making sure that as we collect that information, we continue to update the context of the person who implied with the latest information around the household so that we can serve that information forward. So we're using some of the things that we've built in the past. We're enriching it with some of the stuff that we're putting forward with MyCity, combining those together to make a better, a better assessment engine.
And so the, the data being pulled from, for, from like childcare, that's specific to information that people put on-
That's correct.
Creating a profile.
That's correct.
And then on the social services or cash assistance or, or-
Access HRA.
Okay. And, and do folks, do folks know that? For folks that just have Access HRA, for example, do they know that their data is being pulled for the purpose of like improving MyCity?
Yeah. So when you apply for any city benefit, including things like food benefits or financial benefits, part of that application process is to make future determinations or to make determinations on similar services. That information may be used. So we are not taking anyone's information and using it out of context for what they initially applied for. And I'd also like to remind Council that we have an Office of Information Privacy that's also built at reviewing our use of the data and working out agreements between the agencies that house that information and anyone in between that may have access to it.
And how, okay, great. I'm gonna, I use the app for my mom, so I'm gonna take a look. I use the app for my mom, so I'm gonna take a look. How long for that information? How long do you all have that information? That, you know, people's data for, outside of the, what you have from the MyCity portal?
So I'd say retention, retention of data is heavily tied to regulatory requirements. So depending on what you applied for, the regulatory requirements of retaining that data may be different. But in the specific data sets, we could sit down with Council at any point in the future and review the existing data sets and the specific retention requirements. It's hard to tell you that right now because some of that requires the subject matter expertise of the agencies themselves, but we can certainly facilitate a conversation where we can review that.
And for the current phase that you're in of assessing, you know, and I think it's, I think it's incredibly useful for people to know what they qualify for, what they're eligible for. I think that's all really empowering. What is that timeline, I guess, or like, what are the internal benchmarks you all are instituting? What does success look like in, in this particular phase? Is, is success, we have client, New Yorker number one, we've connected them to these four additional benefits. Is that success? What is that for you all? And what is that timeline where you're looking to be able to achieve that?
So a part, a part of the complexity in building something like this is that you have systems that are in the city that have decades of inertia behind them, and the technical expertise behind those systems and building those integrations are, there, there's a mix of capability. And I think for us, a lot of the work that we're doing right now is going back, re-engineering some of the things that's been done and making sure that when we collect information, it's the right, the right information. But the specific, for the specific program deliverables and things that are coming out within the next quarter, our deputy, our Deputy Commissioner for Strategic Initiatives can, can highlight some of those and what's coming in the immediate future.
Hi. Thank you for that question. So I think the CTO had already mentioned the platform that we're building everything on. It's called Common Services, which is going to be, has launched last summer. The landing page where a user can create a profile, that's where they save information they have used before for applications. Our goal is to use that platform to send notifications based on the information they provided, what other programs and services a user may be eligible for. So that is going to be a pilot that we're hoping to launch in the coming months.
Sorry, before the end of the year?
Ideally, but it still has to go through user testing and, and review.
So when we say user testing, a lot of the feedback that we're getting as we're building in the process, as we mentioned in our last appearance, it's human-centric design. So what we're doing is we're going to the agencies that are providing services today, that are existing user base. We're getting a sample set of users, and we're showing them what we're building. We're getting feedback as we enrich and we enhance the application. We bring them back to get more feedback just to ensure that what we build is useful for the people that actually have to use the service. So part of our development cycle is ensuring that, from a public sentiment perspective, we're getting, we're meeting the mark in terms of what they expect. And before we stick to a hard timeline and deploy something that doesn't work, we, we are more focused on making sure the capabilities are in place and they, they function in the right ways.
And notifications are intended to be sent electronically only?
I'm sorry?
Notification to, to New Yorkers. Like, once you get past this pilot, how do you intend to notify folks? Is it just through their email that they provided?
Yeah. So it's either through email, going to the centers as they apply, having resources go with laptops, asking people if they're willing to help us test. I mean, there's a myriad of ways that we collect sentiment. It's not just, it's not exclusively through a digital means. It's also through, it's also through in-person and going to actual centers when benefits are being issued.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Eric Botcher, who's joined us. So can I ask, you touched a little bit on this in your testimony, Commissioner or CTO. Do you have a preference?
Sorry?
Do you have a preference? If I call you Commissioner or CTO?
Whatever you come from, what's fun with me.
Commissioner is faster. For improving the remaining aspects of, of MyCity, you touched a little bit on it through the, the Jobs NYC website, the small businesses, and then, and then benefits. So I do have, I would love to know if you can share any specifics of how you're looking to improve those existing pieces of, of the portal. I can tell you from feedback that I've heard, obviously, the childcare piece seems to be the most successful. It was the first phase. People have been utilizing it now for over a year. But it feels like the small business one, the jobs piece, and even the benefits piece kind of just refers, refers folks out, particularly the jobs one and the benefits. So I would love to know if you have specifics on how you're all looking to integrate it more or if at all improve. What are some of the specifics that you can share with us that you've seen are necessary to improve the functionality of the portal?
So I, I'd say if, in order to understand how far we've come, well, sometimes we have to take a look back at where we came from. If you went to legacy nyc.gov/jobsportal and you looked at what that, it was a legacy PeopleSoft application. In order to search, find, and apply for a job, it, it was not only complex, but the, the website experience was poor. So what we did in those seeking jobs, we went to both hiring halls. We went and we brought individuals in, and we got feedback in terms of what about the site worked, what did not work. And then we took market data by looking at those that have the highest demand in terms of employment, those that are getting a lot of applications to see what works. And then we modeled a portal that was heavily based on that, that, that design, that approach, and what people liked about that. And as a result, what we've seen is a 326% increase in the amount of people that are not just visiting the site, but also that are actually applying for jobs. So it shows us that, one, the portal is, is more friendly in a way that people can use, and then also it's more appealing for them to apply. I think any place that you want to work, if you look at the digital experience as like your first glimpse into what the front door of that operation looks like, the legacy jobs portal was very poor, did not provide a good story. And I think now we're seeing- And I think now we're seeing based on use case that that it's doing what we intended it to do. Now, when it comes to the business portal and what we've done around the chat function, I I think for us, I I give council members, the council just or the committee, just a a highlight. Like when you look at three one one, uh New York City runs one of the nation's largest information support lines. Over seventy percent of the calls in three one one does not result in the city agency having to respond to anything. People are calling for information, right? Now, if you look at the, if you look at that demand and you look at the amount of wait time that exists within the three one one universe, all right? We're doing a great job, but we could do a better job if we can field some of these lower level requests for information by providing something that's more usable. The chatbot was the first phase at testing that in a very specific, in a very specific and limited universe around small business services, and that seemed to work out very well for us. There was some initial sentiment feedback that came out of um out of press about it providing some hallucinations and things along that lines, which we quickly refined. But by and large, that's giving us a foundation where we can start to serve New Yorkers and provide more context to digital assistants so they can start to field more of those questions. So when you think about the limitation that's on the chatbot today where it's limited just to small business services or people that are looking to open a business, if we could open the universe of that up oh to everything that three one one can service, it would significantly help alleviate some of the back pressure that comes to coming into three one one and gives us a better response time in terms of dealing with New Yorkers that need urgent assistance from quality of life-related issues. In addition to that, the actual bit, the small business portal that that exists, again, that was one of the things that we built in conjunction with industry to figure out where New York wasn't getting it right. And we've gotten great feedback from industry that the portal's in the line of what they need. But I think we are, in many cases, a victim of our success. So as good as that is, people always want more, and we're working to give more as quickly as we can.
Okay, can I ask, um thank you, can I ask for um related to the the jobs site, the the old one that you were referring to? Um I agree, I'm I'm looking at it now, I'm looking at, um so I I got on My City, checked for jobs, and then it it refers you out, it sends you out to the the Jobs N Y C. So the data that you are referring to, that people pull, that people applied, that's from this separate site, from Jobs N Y C?
That's correct.
Okay, so they're not creating a profile on the My City portal to be able to apply for jobs? They don't need to?
So in the background, although you are ha- you have two different experiences, that's the part of building common services. The common services piece integrates everything together. So whether you've applied to a job or you're seeking city services in some way, shape or form, being able to give you one introspective look at the city. And I think as it stands right now, in order to deliver expediently, we had to reshape based on some of the existing capabilities that we had. There was a jobs application portal, how can we launch that without losing customer information? There was, you know, a business portal, how can we deploy that without losing customer information? So in each one of these spaces, we use common design approaches, we use common implementation schemes. And in the background, as we look to build common services, we're gonna be in a space where it doesn't matter which website you look hit or which one it looks like when you go to log in and when you go to navigate through, all the data between them, where relevant, with user permission will be shared.
Okay, so, okay, I'm clear on that. I I think it is it is slightly faster than three one one. I mean, it's, I don't know how much faster. I just went on three one one. Literally just put in jobs and it recommended.
I'll take slightly faster. I'll take it. I'll take it.
I don't know. I don't know. I'm just, I'm try, I'm trying to understand. Okay. And then on the the chatbot piece, commissioner, I think there there was a little bit more than just like a little, a little like annoyance, a little flack on, I guess, the information that people were were getting back. Um and I think A I, A I can be a very useful tool, I think especially um in the way that a lot of folks have been conditioned to to search. I think A I is like, is the tool for them, right? Um but we heard of a number of accounts, um which I know I I think then the the agency then started to include a disclaimer um for folks using the chatbot. So I would just like to understand how um and and can you confirm, are you using a a separate vendor for the chatbot piece? It's not, it was not created in-house with through O T I, the chatbot tool for the My City portal?
Yeah, so both the My City portal and the chatbot tool were built with a amalgamation of internal and external resources. The actual concept of the My City chatbot was led and overset on overseen by a number of people within O T I and actually helped built by the folks within O T I as well.
And so I think it was a little bit more than just like a little, a little um bump in the road because I I think still as of last week, there were, there was some instances of folks using the chatbot for basic small business information, how to get started, where to find a permit, and the information was not necessarily accurate. Um so how are you all looking to kind of assess that? Like, how how are you improving it? What does that, what does that look like? How can you improve this chatbot feature? Um it's still through last week, there was inaccurate information.
So the the initial version of the chatbot that was released was using a legacy version of G P T, G P T three point five, and then we subsequently upgraded to G P T four point O, right? Now, what that means is the engines that make the determinations in terms of what information it pushes forward, as you go up in versions, the capability significantly increases and it gives us the abil, it gives the algorithm the ability to make better determinations on what it puts out. In the cases where we got public sentiment around uh hallucinations and things along that lines, even in the reported cases, we ran an assessment of every time the chatbot had had been asked any one of those questions. And outside of the cases that were reported, there were very few and few and far in between. I think for us, one of the things that we consistently do, and it's part of the development process, especially when you you leveraging emerging technologies, is you continuously assess, collect feedback and and refine. And when we were looking at something like a a chat instance that gives information back in real time and a closed instance, one of the things that we did as part of the New York City development process, we made a determination that anything that we built, we had to ensure that we protected our constituent data first. So a lot of the people that leverage public models, that model's continuously refined by public feedback. Someone's using it or you have multiple customers using the same model, they can update in real time. For us, we wanted to ensure that as we built, that those models were only updated with with content that we wanted it to learn. And we have a team that's dedicated in ensuring that we continuously refine that to make it better. I think after the upgrade, or I should say, I think, I know after the upgrade, when we went from G P T three to G P three four, we updated some of the safeguards in place. We've now put a lot of control in place. When someone searches something which is outside of the chatbot's capability, we've been very clear at proactively serving up, saying this is outside of the use case, please refer to um the disclaimer.
Okay, and can you just remind us when when um when was the upgrade? If you said it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we upgraded the the backend engine that that's used to provide information out. Uh the there was chat G P T version three point five, we upgraded from three point five to version four point O.
But and when was that? I'm sorry.
Oh, I defer to our associate commissioner, Amrit Singh.
This, okay, because it was launched in, was it announced in, where do I have it? October, September of last year?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so just this summer it was, it was updated?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, um and then on beyond whatever phase we are in right now, which is, I'm clear, assessing data, hopefully getting through a successful pilot program, hopefully sending notifications out to folks, um maybe by the end of the year, maybe early next year, wha- what is after that? What comes after that phase?
So after that phase, um we're in the process of assessing all digital city services, and we're trying to make the determinations of what makes the best sense to integrate. So everything from the universe of access H R A to filing for building permits to anything else that you can apply to online, we're trying to figure out which is the best path and what's the easiest thing to integrate into the system without disturbing any of our existing user base. So it's an assessment that's that's currently um underway. And as we have services that are identified for integration, we can gladly share that forward with council.
And do you have agencies, for example, you you mentioned that the small business piece that that ask came from industry. Um do you have the same with other, are you hearing from other industries, from other agencies that wanna integrate their services into the portal? Are you are, do you have any feedback on that?
So one of the things that we did, and this was a part of establishing the Office of Tech and Innovation, prior to the start of this administration, we didn't have a centralized catalog of what the agents, what the city was doing from a tech perspective. And one of the things that we wanted to ensure, and this would help us forge a pipeline of what went into My City, is understanding where the city was investing from a technology perspective. So what we did across all agencies was we developed a um a a survey tool and we collected information from every agency that was conducting a technology project that had an individual or aggregate spend that was over two two million or over so that we can take a look at where we were building and what information we would be deploying and where we would ex, where we would um put capital out over the next, you know, the next two to five years. From there, we've been looking at each one of the programs that have funding, and we are looking at what's the best pathway to deploy those programs. Instead of deploying them in a vacuum, how can we use the opportunity to renew those applications and fold them into the My City universe?
And do you have a sense of when you would be able to make that determination as an agency for the purpose of the portal, like?
So I I I'd say uh as we get closer to the common services deployment and as we um continue to refine the existing services, as we enter the next quarter, uh we're gonna have a roadmap that's gonna deploy or display what's coming over the next year.
So potentially early twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, so I I'd say before the end of twenty twenty-four, we'd have a decent-sized roadmap of what will come over the next year.
Okay, before my baby's born, maybe? Before my baby's born, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, December. Mid-December.
It's December?
Mid-December.
Mid-December?
I wanna show this baby the world.
All right, all right, all right, all right. You know, now now that I know that, I'm gonna, that that's gonna be, that's that's gonna be the gift.
Wanna see, yeah, we wanna see progress. And I think folks, um again, would love to have a better understanding of like what's next. And I think um in the in the launch, I was like, oh, childcare and small businesses, that's an, that's an interesting combination of like areas to focus on. And so, um yeah, I just think folks wanna know what's what's next.
Yeah, you you know, I I I'm, I appreciate the enthusiasm behind it. And I would say our greatest accomplishment so far is the fact that we've been been able to deliver not one, not two, but multiple services in conjunction with doing a bunch of other things at the same time. Um and I share that enthusiasm. One of the things that I'm very conscious and cognizant about is that it's easy to come out and make public commitments about things that we will do and not be held accountable for actually doing those things. That's why I'm very conscious about when we say we're gonna do something or when we announce something, it's something that's tangible, that's something that will be done. So when you get that list before the baby is born, right? Uh anything that we commit to will be something that's tangible enough where we feel fairly confident that it will be delivered within the timeframe that we set for.
Okay, I love hearing that. Um can I ask a little bit more on the childcare piece? Because I I am hearing kind of um a mixed reviews from some folks about the length of time that it takes to process. So I'm not sure if, what is the system that you all have to be able to hear, to hear feedback from folks um that have already set up a profile, have applied, excuse me. Um is there a survey? What what happens in those instances? I've heard of some, um and I work closely with the early childhood education movement, and I've heard from folks that saying like it's taking too long, so they're just going to the site and and sending a paper application in anyway.
Yeah.
Um so what is your response to that? Have you heard a lot of that? What and what are some of the steps that you are taking to to prevent that?
So we collect sentiment in different places along the way. After application submission, we connect, we collect initial sentiment to see how people felt about the process. Um I'm proud to say that most New Yorkers that have taken the tool, I believe, is it over ninety percent, that have taken, that has filled out the application online, has rated the application a four out of five or higher, which is, which is significant, which means that people are pleased with the application process. Now, fulfillment of benefits is something that I would have to defer to the agencies that actually fulfill those benefits. So I would say New York City Schools, Small Business, um uh D S S, and everyone in between that actually uh pays that information out, uh they they're responsible for delivering post, post res, post receipt. Um I think if you apply online, or I should say, if you apply online and then you submit a paper application, uh in that process, it's it's more like duplicating effort. I I I'm not necessarily certain that a paper application, I'm confident that paper application is not gonna be served any faster than a digital application. In fact, the digital assist, the digital applications come in faster, so they will be served faster. And I think that um the agencies in this process, it's just like we've refined the submission process, there's an opportunity to refine the eligibility review process. And that's one of the things that we're looking at when we talk about future refinements with My City. It's like, it's great that you can apply for the service in one place, you can get a preliminary review of what your eligibility looks like. All that's great. But after I submit now, what happens? And that's the part of the refinement piece that we're bringing into the childcare universe, to make sure that after you apply, that entire universe of processing that, processing that application lives in one space so you can get real-time feedback in terms of where your application sits. And I think right now, part of the, part of the clunkiness that people feel to a degree is the fact that you can apply and you can get determinations back through one interface, but the thing in between is being managed in separate places, which is what we're trying to integrate now.
And that's what you're trying to do, trying to do now. But you, O T I, besides getting, you know, four out of five stars or five out of five stars, you're not hearing individual takes of folks who are saying, you know, the processing time is taking a really long time, I haven't gotten a response. Are you all hearing that specific?
Yeah, so as the chief technology officer for the city of New York, my purview is technology. In terms of business operations, I'd have to defer to the agencies that are responsible for fulfilling those.
And do you send those directly to the agencies?
Yes, those go directly to the agencies.
Okay, and then do you have a sense if it's resolved?
Sorry?
Do you have a sense of if and when those instances, those issues are resolved?
So I I'm gonna defer to my deputy commissioner for strategic initiatives.
So uh like the C T O says, we we can't really speak to the processing on the agency side, but um we convene meetings with the agency stakeholders on a regular basis, and we do hear the feedback of some of the challenges and how long it's taking for the agency to review an application. Um many times, it's because of inaccurate or incomplete applications. Um and that, we are thinking about incorporating into our future phases so that the the application itself can auto-check if you've missed providing information or incorrectly provide the information. This would help um the reviewers review the application faster. Um the other thing we're we're looking to do is screening eligibility in a faster way so that you provide less information as a user and being able to um move faster through the application process. So that's the type of feedback that we get from the agency and that we build into our next versions of upgrading the the childcare service application.
And I under, I understand that. I think working government, I I certainly understand it. By just giving you the perspective of a New Yorker who is, you know, just online, could easily go to three one one, decides to do, to set up a profile, and My City has heard good things from other parents, um for example, and is setting up their profile, putting in all their personal information despite maybe what they wanted, but they're doing it and they're applying it this way. Um if they're having an issue, they're not thinking that it's the D O E, which is, for example, maybe like the second or third process, right? The first line is is the My City portal. And so for a New Yorker that is functioning on that bit of information, they're expecting um some kind of service to the customer, to the client through the the portal. And that's, it's the way that we're conditioned to receive services, government or not.
So I I think, I think you are, you're spot on on that front. Um one of the things that we we are looking very, very diligently at is how do we provide a more common way to collect sentiment, not just after a process has been submitted, but as a process is is underway. And um we're currently in a phase where we're assessing tools that'll give us the capability to do that um and do that not just within an application, but across applications so that we can manage constituent satisfaction. So we're we're looking at that, and it's reasonable to assume that we should have those types of capabilities across all city systems and all city processes. But again, this is one of those things where I say we have decades of inertia behind many of these systems. And user sentiment, user feedback, public satisfaction wasn't something that was contemplated at the time that those things were built.
Okay, I have a couple more questions, and then I wanna pass it off to council member Holden, who's got some more questions. But my 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 questions right now are specifically about uh the childcare piece again. Um is there any plan to incorporate um benefits for New Yorkers that qualify for head start or early head start? I know that's like a, that has been a a an issue or complaint that folks have said, like, yeah, I tried it, but uh what I'm looking for is information about head start and whether or not I can apply for, you know, the local head start in my neighborhood. Um and so that they're doing separate and apart. What was the decision to have that be a separate process and is there an intention to integrate it? Because it's a city program.
It 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 is a city program, but it's administered in a different way. So one of the things that we looked at when we built the childcare portal was it was built around the childcare application, the subsidy childcare application, which is regulated on a state level. We we don't have the regulatory authority in that space. So what we basically did was we built a process So what we basically did was we built a process around that childcare subsidy. And one of the things that we heard, as you've mentioned, is that it's great that it covers that universe, but what about everything else? And we're currently in conversations with schools about integrating the childcare, early childhood education piece of it into, into one universe so that we can make some, we can provide more information out. Again, where we started was a space where we had a lot of, we, we had a lot of, we had a lot of demand and we had low, we had low tech capability. And we've brought that all the way forward. And Head Start, there's, there are capabilities that exist in that space, but it's about providing an integrated experience. Common Services gives us a pathway to do that in, in a much simpler way.
So is that, is that a yes or a no, that you are looking to integrate?
It's, it's yes, we're evaluating.
You're evaluating, so it might not be possible?
That determination, it's hard to tell you at this moment, but I think not possible means that you don't, you're not trying hard enough. I think it's, it's not a question of if it's possible or not, it's a question of when.
And the reason it's, it's not included right now and it's something that you are evaluating, is it because of the, because there's also like a federal interface or what is the, what is the reason for why it's not included now?
The reason is the teams that review these childcare applications versus the Head Start teams and across the agencies, those are different teams and different, and different eligibility reviewers. So we took this process holistically across all agencies. And we took it in place for this childcare subsidy, for Head Start and everything else that has a different eligibility review team, that has a different process. It's, it's almost like taking a separate application and integrating it into the MyCity universe as well. So that, that's, that's why the determination was made. We found everything that had anything to do with the state, with the state regulated childcare subsidy, we pulled it all into one universe. Head Start is not in the same space as these.
It's not in the?
Same space as these.
Have you heard that from folks as well about their interest in wanting to apply for Head Start?
So what we've heard across the spectrum is that what you've done so far is great, but when will, when will we have more?
Thank you. Do you have a sense of, and I know that the data that we have and you shared, you shared really, I think, promising data of the amount of folks that have been applying for childcare. Where 75% of all new applications are submitted through MyCity, I think that's great, congrats. Do you have a sense of, like what, what was the amount of people applying just through paper applications? Do you have, just so that we can compare? Because I, I will also say that the same time that folks were applying, they're, the, the city and the council had invested money in, in marketing. So basically like helping to point people towards the app, like we want you to enroll your kids in our programs, we want you to know what you're eligible for. So it would give me a really good sense of kind of like where we were, where we've come from and where we're at now. Do you all have that information of, of paper applications versus obviously the information that you have today?
So for statistics on applications, I can refer to our Associate Commissioner for Application Engineering that can talk about what the existing pipeline looks like versus paper.
And then also, I'm sorry, if I could just add, do you, if you have information of people that are still using paper applications in FY24?
So right now, the majority of the applications are digital. As of this morning, we've looked back at the stats and now it's closer to 90%, actually, that's digital. So there's a very small percentage of applications that are paper. So as far as applications that have been sent, we're close to 69,000 applications that have been sent. And approximately around the same time, around 9,500 applications that have been paper. And the trend has been that, you know, more and more applications are now digital than paper.
So 9,500 in this last fiscal year are, were submitted via paper?
Since we've started this, this program.
Okay, since last, since March 2023.
Right.
And then what is the amount, I'm sorry, that you said of, of folks applying online? You said 69,000?
No, the, right now, 90% of the total applications are digital. So it's, it's gone up from 75% since we've checked earlier. And as far as paper stats from before, it's a little bit difficult to report because there were a lot of other things happening around that same timeframe with COVID and those type of things. So those stats on paper applications are not as reliable.
And do you all have a breakdown, I didn't ask for this before, but of folks applying in, in the, the specific languages? Just curious for, you know, how many folks are applying in Spanish and other languages? And if you don't have it, you can submit it because I didn't, I don't think I asked for that before.
We gladly follow up and submit and, and submit in the languages that are being submitted.
Yeah, there, so the, and the, the portal is in the 10 languages, right? Okay, yeah, so if you, if you have that, that would be great.
Not a problem.
Thank you. Is it possible for someone who is interested in filling out the childcare application to not agree to the permission to allow their information to be shared with other applications? So if it's someone that's just like, ah, I don't, I, I just want to apply for childcare, I do not want to, I don't want the city to share any of that information, I don't want you to evaluate, assess what, what else I qualify for. Is that an option? Or for someone to utilize the portal, apply, they have to agree to that term?
Yeah, so there's consent language that someone can opt into as they're going through the application process. And if they don't, they don't, they don't have to consent to sharing forward.
Say, I'm so sorry, say that again?
There's a consent process as you're filling out the existing application. And if they don't want to consent for application being used beyond the scope, they just don't have to consent to it.
Okay, but they can still set up the profile and apply?
Yep.
Okay, great. And then I'm going to pass it to Councilmember Holden, I still have some more questions on the childcare, but I've, I've spoken enough. Yeah, are you ready, is it good now?
Yeah, that's good, thank you, thank you Chair. And thank you, I'm going to call you CTO.
Ah, that's fine by me.
That sounds cooler. Anyway, thank you for your testimony and thank you, by the way, for upgrading 311.
Yeah.
The app, I love it, it's getting there, but we're not quite there, but I'll get into that.
We couldn't do it without your feedback.
Well, we have, I have to give you some more feedback because there's a few things that I would still, but, but we'll get to it. I use it every day and it, it's easier now, so it's getting there. Location services, still not so, you know, not so great.
Yeah.
A lot of dead spots where I have to, you know, double back and look at the, try to find an address. But we're getting there, so I appreciate that you, it was out of the blue, just, I, I don't know if the, the committee was, was, was surprised that, that there are changes, but there, there's been some positive, very positive changes. You, you mentioned, on, on my bill, Intro 821, you mentioned in your testimony, the bill could impact what we have built so far and may hinder the ability to implement our work while maintaining flexibility in the future. Could you elaborate on that? Because this is why we have hearings, so we could get feedback and we could negotiate and we could change things and we could change the language to fit your, you know, your goals.
Yeah, so one of the things that, that I think we, we found that was a bit taxing was the, the fact of a mobile application. I think more and more services are being pushed towards a web version, right? So as long as it's capable of being deployed on a mobile format, on a web version, that's what we've been opting towards. It includes the greatest amount of flexibility with the greatest amount of compatibility. So it doesn't matter what type of device you have, when you have a mobile app, in the event that you're building for Android, in the event that you're building for iOS, you'd have to either build specifically in those platforms or build something that's a cross-platform application. And those experiences don't tend, those experiences aren't, aren't usually the best experience. And I think for us, especially with the agility that we're moving and the amount of services that we're deploying, if we hold that to something that's web-based, but that's mobile, mobily aware and mobile friendly, I think that, that's, that's more aligned to what we've been building towards.
Right, so the, the, the mobile devices, it, it's just not, it won't fit right or it doesn't work properly?
So with, when you build an application that's web-aware?
Yeah.
Whether you're using an iPhone, whether you're using an iPad, whether you're using an Android device, a Galaxy, or you're using a tablet, scalability, awareness of how big your display is and adjusting content accordingly. With a mobily aware website, it's capable of doing all of those things without committing to building an actual mobile application itself. So it's, it's, most application processes today, they, there isn't a specific.
But see, that's something we could talk about. Because, you know, if it's easier or if it's better, that, that you have a, a way, other than what's mentioned in the bill, we can negotiate that. That's why we're here.
Yeah, for sure.
So if we, you know, I, I'm, I'm open to that, I think the committee's open to that. If you feel that, you know, it doesn't work on the.
Yeah, for sure, I think we, we can certainly follow up off this, off outside of the forum. And then we can look in detail at the specifics of what works and what's the best path forward and we can, we can sort that out together.
So like your, your ultimate goals, do you, do you plan to adopt the MyCity portal as the only method to access services provided by city agencies? Or each agency, what's happening now, each agency will continue to provide access to services provided those, you know, by those agencies? So what, what's your ultimate goal here with the MyCity?
So my, my ultimate goal, I used to say our ultimate goal is to democratize access to government services in a way that the people care about. One of the biggest challenges I feel and that I've seen across the city is that all of our digital presence, all of our applications have been built and it's been focused around the agency identity, right? And it's like each one of these agencies are their own companies. And for the city, the average person that lives in the city doesn't want to understand the complexities between where DOB steps in and where HPD comes in. And they don't want to understand the brand and the propaganda information around what the agencies look like. They don't care. And for, our goal is through MyCity, is it for it to be your pathway into the city. Remove the agency-specific branding, remove the agency-specific experience and build one way where our constituents can interact with, with government in a way that provides them access to what they need. And I think for us, the more that we continue to propagate the agency-specific approach, we find ourselves further and further away from what the actual individual, what the, what the person in New York City is looking for.
Yeah, and that's, that's the, the reason why we want to, that one portal. Where the agencies can hash it out and we don't need to hear, in fact, we get, we get that every day in, in the council offices. Like, well, DOT says it's not their jurisdiction and they'll kick it to DEP. And it goes back and forth, talking about a manhole.
Yeah.
You know, just like, you know, something very simple that turns into a year-long debate, who, who's responsible? And these are the things, that's why we need one, one location, one site to access all city services. And you, you know, and then a, a user number and I'd be able to delete things I don't want on there. And I'd be able, it's like, it's my own, you know, portal into the city.
Yeah.
That's what you envisioned, right?
I, I'm, I'm with you.
Okay.
I'm with you, yeah, more, more than you could imagine.
All right, so let's, let's keep this, the bill, at least, let's talk about it. Because then, otherwise, you know, when you're, when I'm gone, you're gone. And then this could just go into, into outer space again where there's no goals and we don't have like sort of a roadmap for this. Where it can go on and on, you know, it's happened before you came here. We kept getting, the deadlines kept getting pushed back even before the pandemic. So that's why I was on in the council, the first council. A lot of things in technology were delayed.
Yeah, I, I'd say, all right, so here's, here's.
It's complicated.
No, no, it's, it's not really that complicated. I'd say when you look across the spectrum, you look back at legacy instances of what technology looked like in the city, you had, you had a Department of Information Tech and Telecommunications, which was a managed service provider to city agencies. And as a result, it didn't have any authority to look at programs that cut across business lines and do anything about it. And the biggest thing that they focused on on day-to-day basis was whether applications were up or down, whether data centers were operating or not, and things along that lines. Our greatest success is that over the past two years, we've taken that conversation. These days, we don't sit and we don't talk about infrastructure-related issues. We don't talk about services being down. In fact, if you look across over the past two years, services have been more stable than they ever have in city history. And now we're talking about re, rebranding, changing applications and changing digital experiences in a way that the city's never really considered it before. And a lot of that is due to not just this administration, but it's also due to the council leading and pushing us in the direction to make sure that we get there. So I, I'm, I'm not a fan of continuing to perpetuate the individual experience. I think it's important for us to continue to democratize that. And instead of focusing on an agency-specific brand, it has to be the New York City brand.
Good answer, thank you so much, CTO.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Oh, Councilmember Palladino, you have questions? Go for it.
Thank you very much, I'm taking a slightly different turn on this. I'm going to talk a little bit about security. And when we brought up last year, we talked about the wallet, you know, the city wallet, how, how, what security measures are being put into place. But let me start off by reading a little paragraph here. Intro 0821, a local law to amend the administrative code of the City of New York in relation to the creation of a centralized mobile application for accessing city services. This bill would require the Department of Information Technology and Telecommunications to create a single mobile application allowing the public access services provided by different city agencies. The application would be accessible for persons with disabilities. Now here it is. The, the department would encrypt all exchanges or transfers between the web server, the mobile application, the application software would open a source and public, and make it publicly accessible. So here's where my question is. What measures are going to be taken to ensure the identity is protected? AI information is accurate, yes? How much money has been spent so far on the MyCity portal? But let me go back again to the protection of a person's public trust. And it seems like A21 is addressing that. Centralized system to access, access services is great. It needs to be a simple system. But more importantly, what I fear, and I've always, I always do that, it's the big brother stuff that I always have a problem with. I, we have data breaches all the time, identity thefts is common. Encrypted exchanges, as outlined in Intro 821, would ensure safe exchanges? Can you explain this to me, please? And how can we be concerned about the tracking aspect of all of this? I know I just laid out a whole bunch of stuff to you. So let's just, let's just talk about what measures are being taken to ensure that a person's identity is not, like, this is like super important.
Thank, thank you very much for the question and it's actually a very insightful question. So here's the thing, when you look at AI tools and tools that make determinations based on any information that's provided, one of the reasons why we built the MyCity chatbot in a closed environment is we wanted to make sure that we didn't inadvertently share our constituent information with anyone except the city. So whenever you use the MyCity chatbot, no one outside of the city has access to any of that information and can use that information towards anything because it's developed in a closed environment. From an authentication perspective, well, the thing that you mentioned in terms of services when you log in to make sure that data is encrypted, that's a common practice that we employ across not just internal applications, but applications that are deployed out to the public. Part of any application development process, New York City Cyber Command has an application review process where they look at the security of the application, not just from, for internal use, but from a public perspective. And then we also have partners that we use to validate that those applications are secure and they meet industry standards in terms of best security practices. I think for us, and as you mentioned, like the big brother aspect, a lot of times when you're leveraging tools online and you're using things like chatbots to some degree, a large part of the information that you provide out is used in the background and can be used to enrich that chatbot, but that means other people have access to it. That's part of the reason why when we deployed it, we wanted to make sure that that wasn't the case for the New York City instance, which is why it's, it's in a closed environment. Now the consequence or the trade-off that you take by doing it that way is it means that everything that that bot has to learn, you have to teach it. And it doesn't evolve as quickly as some of the bots that are learning in real time from information that's being used in a public forum. And I think for us, I'd rather trade capability for personal security every day because once we lose it, we can't get it back.
Now going to the wallet. How do you plan to verify the identity of individuals using the city digital wallet or otherwise prevent identity fraud?
Yeah, so one of the things that we're looking at right now and, and the wallet is a critical piece of how services will be rendered going forward. The best way I can, I can put this is that when you look at whether you get transit benefits or you get food benefits or you get financial benefits, those are all served to you on different means, meaning that in some cases you'll get a check, in other cases you'll get a card and, and you have to manage the balances on all those things individually. The concept of having a digital wallet where you can bring all those things together is one of the things that we are diligently exploring. But we want to ensure that when we do that, it's done right.
Yeah.
So the same, what, what we're exploring at this moment is when you get, by the time you get a check from us for anything, for any benefit, or you get a card, there's an eligibility review that's performed, your identity has been confirmed, and that card, that check is issued to a person.
How do they, but how do you confirm the identity?
So the identity would be confirmed as part of the application review process for anyone that's applying for a specific benefit. So because you signed up for a digital wallet or you signed up for the service theoretically because it's not in place yet, but when you apply for one of those services and you say, I want that wallet, that wallet will not have any assets inside until your identity is validated as part of the normal application review process. So let's say, if for this moment, if we had, uh, New York City, New York City Wallet.MIC.gov and you applied for that wallet. And before any benefits were distributed to the wallet, someone would have to confirm that you were eligible for those benefits. They would have to link those benefits to a wallet and to make sure that information goes into a place where we know you are who you say you are. And that, that's how we would, that's how we would prevent fraud. Making sure that the people that are responsible for reviewing the applications today, reviewing the specific details around the person that's applying, making sure that all those components are a part of, um, a part of their review before a single benefit was issued onto the wallet.
I just think because, you know, in today's world that we live in, uh, everything becomes, uh, public knowledge.
Yes.
Whether it's real or whether it's not real. And it seems like people have got a great deal of power over us as individuals and our right to privacy and all that. We have the, uh, what, the new phones coming out.
Yeah.
The 16. That's all AI. I don't know why anybody would want to put their life in their hand. I, I just, I just don't, I don't get it.
Yeah.
But, uh, security is super, super important. And, uh, what's individuals' privacy is their privacy and they're entitled to it.
Yeah.
So I always worry about who has access, who can gain access to anybody's, uh, information. You just don't really feel safe anymore in the environment that we live in. We really don't. And that's for the person that's doing the right thing, just as much as the person that's doing the wrong thing.
Yeah. So I, I'd say it's a very valid concern. The one thing that I would mention in this space is that inadvertently, when you apply for services or you download applications, people should pay very close attention to the, the disclaimers that they sign off on.
Right.
Because in those disclaimers is the details around how people can use your information for other things.
Is always in the details. I do a lot of shopping online and they pop up this thing and says something about cookies. What the hell is a cookie? I swear.
Yeah.
I'm like, no, all right, whether I know what they're talking about or not, the answer is no.
Yeah.
And, and, and that's it. But I want to tell you something. We used, uh, 311 over the past weekend, and I have to tell you, it was phenomenal.
I love that.
Uh, because we had several, uh, drifting, they were homeless drifting through my community.
Mm-hmm.
And man, oh man, got on the phone, they hooked me up with exactly who needed to get hooked up with. And, uh, the, uh, problems were solved within a three-hour time period. So I want to say thank you very much for that. So yes, there has been changes.
Well, one of the things I'd just like to give kudos to, like, um, uh, a lot of this work wouldn't be possible without the team at OTI that actually does the day-to-day work to make sure things like this are reality. A lot of the work that you're seeing on 311 was actually oversaw, overseen by, uh, my associate commissioner for application engineering, Albert Singh. So he, day-to-day, making sure that people get the best from those apps is, he's, he's one of the people that actually made that happen.
Some debacle going, three different areas of the neighborhood, uh, in the community, and, and people not in such great shape. And they managed to get, uh, their services that they needed to them immediately. Uh, and when I say immediately, three hours for New York City in, in what we're in right now, I think is pretty good. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner, I want to just touch on some of the responses about the digital wallet. Thank you. Um, you hadn't mentioned it. You said it was a critical part of moving forward. Every time I, every time I asked what the plan was earlier today, you hadn't mentioned the digital wallet piece. So can we spend some more time, um, on how you were all thinking through, um, how you plan on verifying individuals? How is data being collected? What is it being used for? Who would manage it? Can you speak a little bit to that?
So for the digital wallet component, what we're currently evaluating is how can we have a, an account or, um, a means to provide fin, distribution of financial benefits, security access and identification? How can we get all those things into a single platform? And we've been evaluating, uh, partners in this space that's capable of doing these kinds of things. And I think for us, one of the things we want to ensure that as we push forward on this front, we provide something that provides access to all of the key areas that we need to serve without shortchanging New Yorkers. That's why we want to, that's why we haven't pushed to release anything as yet. We want to make sure that it's done in the right way. Um, as it stands right now for eligibility review, uh, what we, what we plan to lean on is the agency's eligibility review for the applications themselves to deem whether someone should get, um, a benefit or not, to validate both identity. And then from there, once an agency has determined eligibility, they have a means to look up an individual and link that distribution of benefit onto a wallet, or they can choose to deem it, redeem it how they traditionally have in a different way. And I think for us, over the next quarter, as we get towards the end of the year, again, before the baby's born, we're going to have more insight into particularly what that would look like and the platform that we may deliver it on.
That you may deliver. So, so maybe not, maybe no digital wallet through, for, through MyCity?
No, so we have a central identity store where we keep information about the person who's applied and some of the information that they provided. When I look at the concept of a digital wallet, it's more than just identity. It's identity, it's also access and distribution. And the access and distribution pieces are what we don't have today.
Okay. But there is theoretically a time and space where.
No, it, it, it will certainly come. It will certainly.
You're confident digital wallet will be a, a tool of, of the portal?
Uh, I, I am indeed.
Okay. You know, there's a ton of concerns, um, about data collection and data information, what you're doing with that information. Can you share a little bit more about that in the relation to, uh, the partners that, that you mentioned in this space? If you want to get into specifics, but is there anything you can share about that?
No problem. So we haven't determined who the partner, who the partner is yet. We're currently evaluating. And what I'd say in that space is regardless of the decision that we make, there's a cloud writer, there's a privacy writer, and there's a, a security review for any technology that we adapt and we bring in that serves our constituency. And we want to ensure that in that process, we're not trading off security for capability, as I mentioned. If I have to trade security and privacy for capability, I will do it every day of the week. Uh, in terms of public sentiment around trust, uh, I'd, I'd remind, or I'd look back in the past. When email came out, everyone thought that email wasn't secure, someone was going to get their information. And then at some point, post-mail was still the primary and we drifted away from post-mail and email is now the way that most people send correspondence. I'd say, very similarly, when you look at managing public benefit, um, in many other spaces, rendering public benefit or running, rendering benefits on a digital ID, a good example of this is Starbucks. You go to Starbucks, you buy coffee, there's a Starbucks application, you can load that application with money. You can use that application to conduct transactions and you get loyalty from using the application. It's a way that the public has come to terms with in many different spaces. I think in government, we are in the, um, digital stone age when it comes to rendering these types of benefits. And as we mature, it's going to take people who are recipients of the benefits to, a little bit of time to get comfortable with it. But we're here, we have offices that are dedicated to ensure that they're secure and their privacy is maintained. And we're going to do what's necessary to continue to maintain and build public trust.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I think the services, I mean, it's very different, I think, for someone who uses Starbucks and is using that, their app.
Yeah.
Um, than someone who's depending on cash assistance or, um, whatever it is, whatever, whatever the vision is for, um, the, the cyber wallet.
Yep.
I mean, just, just all of last year, the number of constituents that came into my offices for, um, fraud because their EBT, um, income was, was stolen.
Yep.
And continues to be. So, I mean, you have to understand that I think the, the public's trust in a, a, a single city agency to roll this out in a safe and secure way has really certainly been eroded in, in the last couple of weeks or so. But I think it's, 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 it's a really tough sell, um, despite how, how much faster it could be. And, and we're also talking about people who, um, are looking for a service, who are in some kind of way, you know, potentially in a vulnerable position. So I personally have a ton of concerns about supporting and moving forward with a digital wallet for, for the purpose of, uh, New Yorkers being able to, to spend. I also think the feature about potentially being able to monitor like, like spending habits and, and where they're shopping and the things that they're getting. I don't know if that's being communicated, uh, to New Yorkers that like, how that is beneficial.
Yep.
To them. So I, I personally have concerns about that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think when we deployed MyCity, uh, around childcare, we saw initial concerns around submitting digital applications. And as of this morning, we've, uh, from the last quarter to this quarter, we've upgraded from 75% to over 90% of the applications that are coming in. I think it's a process much like human development, crawl, walk, run, jump. And I think a lot of skepticism around the government's ability to deliver has been earned over time. And it's going to take us a lot of time to unwork that. So I, I hear the concern. All I'm asking for council is to give us an opportunity and let's, let's see. And we'll continue to deliver in the ways that we have, um, since we, since we've assumed the positions.
And when do you think that, I know you're still kind of evaluating, evaluating partners. Um, do you have a timeline for announcements about the digital wallet component?
So we, I have a timeline about some announcements, but not the digital wallet. And I'd say as we get closer towards the end of the year, um, we are, as we get close to the end of the year, and I'm going to target the first week of December because you said mid-December. First week of December, we're going to have a tangible timeline where we can sit down with the tech council and we can review that together.
Okay, okay. And then, um, uh, the last piece on the digital wallet. Will the wa, digital wallet in the MyCity portal mirror the prepaid debit program that was used for migrants?
Oh, wow.
Through Mokafi or Mobility Capital Finance?
Yeah, so I, I think that you can use that experience as a lessons learned and you can see what works and what doesn't work. I think the capability that was provided in that space is something that we're looking to provide. The specific, the specific vendor that would be used and the way that we, in that determination hasn't been made as yet. So I can't tell you that it would be the same as what was done in the migrant space, but I think that, uh.
Are they a partner at this point? I know you haven't, are they a partner as Mokafi? Because I know the city is still, um, in contract with them. Are they, are they a partner for this particular piece?
Uh, not, not at this moment.
Okay. Um, and then. Excellent. Oh, question just about, um, city government and direct deposits with a cyber wallet. Is that something that you're looking to do? I think it was referenced in maybe, um, a hearing that we had last year, um, where you testified about centralizing benefits on a single digital platform. And that would, that could include replacing traditional, so city government payroll to direct deposits with a cyber wallet. Is that this?
Yeah, so that, this is one of the things that we're evaluating as a use case for this. Uh, unfortunately, in today's society, there's still a significant portion that's un, that represents, um, the unbanked or underbanked community, and that includes some of the members of the city workforce. We have predatory institutions like check cashing establishments that take portions of city taxpayer, city employee pay to, to provide them access to, um, to cash. And if we can provide a service that reduces the dependency on those types of businesses and provides the capability for them getting real-time access to the money that they need, is something that we have, you know, a responsibility of doing, and that, that's part of what we're evaluating. And one of the things that I, I'd say it's, it's part of this administration's approach is it's not just focused on how it can make public, the public good better. It's also, how can we, so part of the public good is also the city employee good. And what can we do to enhance the quality of life for those that work as a part of the city that find themselves in some of the same population that we're trying to serve?
Do you have a sense, and as part of your evaluation, do you have a sense of how much of the city's workforce, um, is engaged in the direct deposit versus, you know, paper check, um, conversion?
So we, we can confer with our colleagues at FISA OPA and get that information, and then we can bring that back to council.
And have you also, as part of your evaluation, have you been in contact with DC37, for example, about the potential and, and kind of how you were all thinking about cyber wallets and, and payment?
So any, any of the, any of the benefits that we look at bringing forward that impacts the city's workforce at scale, we work in collaboration with the Office of Labor Relations. And that team coordinates the communication between us and any of the unions that may be impacted by those services. Uh, when the, when it gets more material or we're in the space where we're looking to collect sentiment or feedback, we'd work directly with OLR to get that information as we've had on a number of other fronts.
So, so you, so you have spoken to the office, to OLR about the potential evaluation of a cyber wallet?
So as part of the evaluation process, the intent is to ensure that we collect feedback from the unions to ensure that as we bring services forward, we're serving their constituents as well.
Okay, okay. Um, and then I don't know if you, I don't have any notes, I don't know if you answered this, but the data collected through the digital wallets, um, what would it, what would OTI be using it for and, and kind of like, what is the data that you'd be collecting?
So I, there, there's a concept of providing incentive benefits to promote healthier behavior. Um, so for example, um.
So which concerns about that?
I'm sorry?
There were so many concerns about that.
Yeah, so I, I think that there's a concept that if you leverage benefits in one way versus another, like if you buy water versus buying soda, being able to provide incentive points based on that. Uh, but all those things are theoretical at the moment. I think once the information is collected, you have ways where you can do benefits, you can do matching, you can do, you can do things that you can't do with paper-based.
Yeah.
Um, benefits today.
And, um, I'm glad you said it's theoretical, um, because I'm just curious if that is like a, in, in the way that you've been talking about kind of the future of MyCity, where you're really focusing on not the agency, but, but the client and like kind of what their needs are. Is this a need that people have expressed or that, that, you know, relevant agencies have expressed where it would be good to monitor spending habits so that we can potentially promote healthier habits? Is that something that you're hearing from folks?
So what, what we're hearing is that there are a number of programs that not just exist at a city level, but at a federal level that helps gear towards healthier habits and being able to track information in some way, shape or form that can show compliance, which means we can render more benefits or distribute, distribute more to those that need it. I think that, that's, that's where, uh, that comes from. But again.
But it wouldn't come from OTI?
It wouldn't come from OTI. It'd come from those that actually administer the benefits. We're, we're the facilitator of building the systems. They're those that are responsible for the business end.
Okay, okay. Can I ask, um, now, my next series of questions are going to be about kind of the build-out of, of MyCity.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know that initially, certainly before it was launched, there was the intention to, of, of doing it in-house. Um, that's not been the case entirely, correct?
Yep.
Um, so can you share a little bit about kind of what those, those challenges were? I know, I know it was, we, it was still very much like, we were still remote, there was still a pandemic. Um, I know there's been a number of hiring freezes, so I would love if you could specify, um, if that decision was at all because of a hiring freeze, because of capacity. Um, and then what were, uh, some of the, and if you can just specify from the portal, what has a vendor and what's in-house? So the childcare piece, the business piece, the jobs piece, um, the chat, the chatbot. What is, what was produced in-house versus utilized for, with a vendor?
Yeah, so I, I would say everything that was produced was produced with an amalgamation of in-house and external resources. Uh, as you mentioned, there, there has been a number of constraints that has impacted the city as a whole. Um, OTI has not been exempt from some of those constraints. Uh, since the beginning of the administration, from January 2022 to now, we've lost over 350 employees, right? And that means that when you lose that many people, that means that there, there naturally, uh, workload that has to be redistributed in ways to.
And hasn't been filled, their vac, their vacancies?
That, that, that is correct.
Okay.
All right. So we've, of recent, we've been ensuring that our most critical areas, things like New York City Cyber Command and the areas that are in charge of the most critical services, public safety, 911, those kind of things, that we ensure that we maintain the staffing levels in those spaces to make sure that we can continue to provide the critical services that we do. And the areas where we're losing application development resources, it's for a myriad of reasons. And I think in that, in that space, we still have a commitment to deliver it to the public. And we do that by using staff org and bringing in resources that can help us maintain that, that, that delivery schedule. Um, for us, I, it's, it's, um, a mix of bringing in private and, and public resources together to build something is not a foreign concept. However, what is a foreign concept is after a system has been delivered, the city. However, what is a foreign concept is after a system has been delivered, the city having the capability to manage it on its own. So what we've done along the way as we developed My City is we made sure that the city's development teams have been integral part of how the systems have been built, so that we don't find ourselves in a position as we turn over from phase to phase to phase that we're continuously dependent exclusively on external resources to build and maintain a system. This is how the city finds itself um beholden to partnerships, vendor partnerships, because it has no capabilities to manage on its own. I can say with a high degree of confidence, everything that we've built on the My City side of the spectrum has been built with both city and and um contracting resources. But should it, when the time comes, or should the event call for it, the city is capable of managing the systems that have been built and the services with its workforce.
Excellent. And and can you share um how many contracts or how many vendors, excuse me, um are are registered or are contracted with you all to work on My City specifically?
For that, I would, I would pass to the deputy, our Deputy Commissioner for Street and Commissioners.
Um, since its inception, there've been sixty-seven contracts. Um, fifty-eight of them were MWBEs.
Great. Um, and of the sixty-seven contracts, is there a particular feature of the portal that um is utilizing more of these vendors than others?
So like the CTO said, we use vendors and in-house staff for all of the different services and platforms.
Sorry. So in terms of the vendor distribution on which specific components, I think that um for us when you look across the spectrum, it isn't that any one particular is heavily subsidized by the vendor community. Uh, we, we are, I'd say there's a fair distribution across the board. And key capabilities where we need support, uh it, it, there isn't any one specific area of the development for My City that that is more heavily subsidized than another.
And was there an RFP, I'm so sorry, was there an RFP that went out of for the, the app?
Yeah, so many, many of the components that we have MWBE part participation in, each one of those required an RFP to go out, so a vendor to respond to fill that require, that request.
And does the duration of the contract? I guess, what, what are the durations for some of the contracts? Are they all, cause what, were all, it was one RFP, correct?
Yeah, no, so in, in some cases, there, there were, there were multiple. And the duration of the contact, contract heavily depends on the component. So some of the technology components of the contract due to aligning with capital eligibility are somewhere between three to five years. The professional services contracts and some of them run year to year. One of the things that we wanted to do as part of building this process and as council had requested and as the mayor has committed to delivering higher use of our MWBE partnerships. Instead of la- launching one massive systems integration contract in this space, we chose to take components of this and form it out to the MWBE community so that we can distribute part of the city's spend to ensure that those areas also got, also got part of this, this contract work.
And how long are, are some of those contracts?
The pro-services contracts tend to run on an annual basis. And the technology contracts tend to run on a um, on a multi-year for the actual components themselves.
And could you share, so and then the, that you started working with uh vendors or contracting out since twenty twenty-two, since the, the announcement or around?
Yeah, so since um, since a lot of the development work began in mid-twenty twenty-two. And I'd say between then and now that that work has been continuous.
And do you have a sense of what the total cost has gone out to vendors?
So the total to the vendors in particular, uh, we would have to get a specific breakdown uh for you in that space. And the total in the My City, the total in the My City universe, I, it total spend aggregate is about sixty million.
Six zero?
Sixty, yeah.
Million.
Million, alright. So that sixty million is inclusive of platform support. So things that you legacy, that you may have known as a data bridge or things that provide information out to open data, things like that. Uh, all those things have been conformed into the My City universe because as part of building core services or common services, all those things or those discrete components, they may have lived in individual places before. But because they're being used for My City and we're gonna standardize on those platforms, we've brought them all into one universe instead of having them live in different spaces.
Okay, excellent. Um, for the childcare portion of the portal, um that was also used, using inter, in-house and external vendors?
That, that is correct.
Okay. Um, do you have a sense of how many vendors were, were utilized?
So the total of, the total that um Deputy Commissioner Troy laid out uh is across the entire universe. And when we talk about My City, we talk about it as an ecosystem. The childcare component is a business component. But in the background, the components that are used are to deliver childcare are in line or in common with the same things that are used to deliver jobs and the same thing that's still used to deliver small business services. They're all the same.
But you're using specific vendors for the, the childcare piece, right? You're not, or are using sixty-seven of them are all involved in the childcare?
No, so the sixty-seven vendors that have been contracted provide different components of My City. Uh, we can give you, we can give you a detailed spend review on each individual component. We can follow up with that for sure. Um, as it stands right now, the reason why it's not broken down at that level is simply because uh, across the spectrum, a lot of the, the work that's been done is shared between all three business functions.
Okay. Okay, so there's not a specific vendor that you can share about that worked on?
As it stands right now, if I just quantify budget-wise for childcare in uh fiscal year twenty-five for services, uh we're looking at wow, we're looking at five million four hundred and, and eighty dollars that's been spent.
Okay. And um is that contract still ongoing, for example?
Yeah, that, that, those contracts are still ongoing.
For childcare specifically?
For, so when you say for childcare specifically, childcare, I go back to is a business function. But to support childcare, when you talk about building the digital presence, the website, when you talk about building um the integrations between systems that support childcare um and My City, like those things are the same, to a degree, are the same teams that are building the integrations between other systems in My City. So it isn't that their work is exclusive to childcare. So when those contracts are ongoing, when the childcare work phases off, those same contracts will be used to continue to build on for the other services that will be delivered.
Okay, so the, the reason I'm trying to kind of like narrow in on it is because of the because it, it, obviously the childcare piece is the most advanced piece of the portal. It's the one that has had the most interface. Um, and I think is probably the one you have the most feedback on. So just kind of reverting back to um, kind of like the responses, the delay in processing times where I'm clear that it's, it's not, it's not necessarily the technology that, the portal, it might be they're not filling out the information entirely. Some of the information is wrong. I'm trying to get to a place where we're saying this is, this is a particular vendor and this is how we're working with them specifically on this piece to, to improve it. So that's why I'm like, who is it?
Okay.
What, I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, so that, that, that helps to a degree. So um there's business analysis work that's done exclusively for childcare. But a lot of the other services, it's like hiring a painter to paint a house. Childcare is one room of the house, but the painter has more work to do across the space. So the contract for the painter is gonna extend beyond the room. It's gonna go to cover the entire house. So what we can do is a direct follow-up from this is we can provide a breakdown of the specific hours that were allocated exclusively to each component so that you can see, and then we can have that aligned to the total contract allotment.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to ask for I guess um, uh, another question on, on the vendors piece. Just because based on some of their responses, it seems like there's kind of like a there might potentially be like a little, a little lull, um because you're doing evaluating and and trying to um launch the, the common services platform. Um, are there are there, are there other vendors or other RFPs that you're thinking about um as you are thinking through the digital wallet, for example? Is there is there, is there another moment um throughout the, the rollout of My City that we can anticipate additional vendors um for, for additional services?
Yeah, so as some services phase out and as other services roll in, uh, things like the digital wallet is something that has to go out as part of an RFP process. The, and other services that we look to integrate that are outside of the universe of what we already have, uh, those will likely go out in the RFP process. The things that we, we know and that we can quantify and things that we're using will continue um to be deployed leveraging the existing partnerships. And when those partnerships expire, we'll follow PBB rules to make sure that we bring in other partners that can help us deliver in the same spaces. Um, as it stands right now, uh, any service that gets integrated in is gonna require an RFP of some sort. That's beyond the scope of what we're already doing.
And I'd like to acknowledge council members Juan and Joseph, who have just joined us from their marathon hearing across the hall. Welcome. Um, is there a time where, because you are utilizing in-house and vendors, is there a time where you're completely phasing out vendors for some of these?
Yes, so as you, as you start to build foundations, it's, it's almost like having people that lay or if you look at it like a process of building a building, um, there's a time to lay the foundation, there's a time to put up framing, there's a time to put in the electrical work, there's a time to do painting, and as specific vendors move on, they get phased out of the program and other ones get phased in to do their specific component.
Excellent. Um, can you share if the administration has any plans to incorporate biometric data or identification technologies into the My City portal?
So a- at this moment, incorporating biometric data is not on the forefront of our, of our approach. Um, when, even when you look at things that use multi-factor authentication, those those methods are secured by platforms. It's not, that's not data that's housed by the city. So at this moment, there's no current plan or no, um, there's no current plan or projected plan to incorporate biometric data.
Great. Um, is there any plan to include predictive models to the My City portal? I know the mayor, um, this is early back in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, um, wanted to kind of convene, combine all agency metrics, um, similar to, to ComStat. Um, so curious if there is a similar intention for My City?
Yeah, so we, we, we would want to keep agencies not just accountable for the work that's been completed, but the quality of work that's been done. So predictive models, analytics to a large scale is all part of what's being done in this world. If you look at, this is like what we're, well, if you look at the scope, what we're doing in terms of rendering benefits to any degree, you wanna ensure that you have the maximum amount of efficacy in deploying those benefits. And also you're reaching the populations of people that need that. In order to assess whether we're doing a good job or not, we have to be able to look back. And in order to assess how much we can grow, we need the capability to look forward as well. So we expect that in both of those spaces to have those capabilities in place.
Sorry, and would it be to predict behavior or to determine eligibility? Is there a set, is, can you get, do you have specificity on like what the?
So, so be- behavior, um, when I say predictive capabilities, it's predictive, but capabilities based on need and demand. So um, those that are applying, are they actually being served? Those with demand, are they actually, though, the areas where there are demand, how effectively are we targeting those areas?
Okay. I just, I know that in other cities, they've attempted to incorporate like predictive models um into benefits and services, and there's just, there's been negative side effects. So um just wanting to kind of hear from you, um, the steps, the steps you take, just like profiling, right? Sharing some of that predictive behavior data with PD, for example. Just wanting to like hear it from you, kind of like a, a strong yes or no, or maybe um, if that is like a, a, a potential feature of the portal.
Yeah, I, I'd say for sure, it's a potential feature of the for, the portal. We would need the capability to, in order to effectively serve, um, not just deal with situations as they arise, but predict to a degree, how much uh is likely gonna be necessary. A good example for that is if you know with the pipeline for early childhood, um, what childcare looks like and you wanted to protect the amount of pre-k seats that you would need during any given period, having the capability to use the information that you have to say, based on what we can see the total volume of kids are, this is predict, this is potentially what the need would be for this particular thing.
And would that access be available to every single agency, including PD?
No, no, no. So in situations like this, uh, this is where role-based access control comes from, and attribute-based access control. What that basically means is that you may work in DSS and you may need access to a specific portion of a record, right? A person's record, but you don't need to see everything ba- in that record, right? Based on your role and based on the attribute in that record, making sure that you only have access to the things that you need to make your determination and not any more than that.
Okay. Specifically, would, would that also apply to the police department? Would, would the role-based access?
Oh, for sure, for sure. No, no, no one is exempt from that process.
With the um chatbot, is there any, has there been any data collected from the AI chatbot? Has there been any data collected from, from users utilizing the chatbot?
Yeah, so we collect data all the time around questions that are become, questions that are coming in, accuracy of information that's being put out, number of people served, um, business areas that they're querying, that type of information. But not um user-specific information, like who you are, where you live, that kind of stuff. Not, not identifiable information, but information in terms of what you've searched and what the chatbot has been provided.
And is the chatbot still utilizing um uh, the, the vendor they were contracted with originally, as, as, along with in-house staff?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And for maintenance, cause you mentioned this before, um, obviously, uh, the, the intention is to, yes, phase out some of these contracts. Um, is the maintenance currently for the chatbot being done split? Half and half between in-house and the vendor?
Yes, for sure. So it's, it's currently being done by the OTI team. And we're paying maintenance on the licenses that are required for the vendor. Uh, one of the things that, that I'd point out is, uh, cause I, I don't want you to be blindsided by this. Anytime we deliver technology, regardless of what the scope of that technology is, we have to be in a process where we continuously evaluate to see if we're doing it in the most cost-effective way. Uh, in this case, we delivered the chatbot about a year ago, uh, in a ble- in the bleeding edge of the space of artificial intelligence, technology is growing at a rapid pace. And we're constantly evaluating partnerships to see what's the best way to deliver services at the lowest cost. So if it should be so required, we may be in the space where uh we would continue us, we would keep the chatbot going, but we may switch or we may um evaluate the partnerships that we've established to see if they continue to serve us in the ways that we need to be served.
And so the OTI team, and I fully understand that, thank you by the way. Um, the OTI team is doing maintenance on the chatbot, and just to confirm what, that I heard it right, and uh, you're paying maintenance?
Licenses.
Licenses, okay.
Licenses.
Okay.
And in some cases, there may be components of those licenses that include pro-support, but in general, um, the OTI team is maintaining the deployment.
Do you anticipate any future updates? Um, I know you're at for, for, for the chatbot four point O, the chat GPT uh four point O. Are you anticipating other future updates?
Yeah, so we, we are, we're planning to have updates um that are gonna expand the universe of the chatbot beyond small business services. More details on that will come within the next, within the next um month. But we're, we're certainly looking to expand the use and capability of the chatbot beyond that.
And was there any testing done prior to the launch of the chatbot? And is testing continuous while potentially there'll, there'll be another upgrade?
Uh, there, there was a substantial amount of um in-house testing, and we also did sentiment testing with people out in the public. So they could use a chatbot, see how they felt about the look and feel of it, so we could get some of that sentiment.
What was the sentiment?
So in general, we, we had, um, we had a lot of positive feedback around the information that came out. Um, we had test We had testimonials the day that we launched that included business owners talking about their capability to leverage that. And if it was around when they were launching their business, how much easier the process would have been. So, so far, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback, but we, we, we still have a long road ahead of us because it's only serving one business function within the city. If we can get it to cover more, we would be in a much better space.
Okay. Do you, is, where do you think it would best fit or kind of where, where are you at that, in that analysis?
So I, I think for us, quality of life complaints is an area where I keep, I keep honing in on. New York City three-one-one, it's a fun fact, right? For New York City three-one-one, out of ten New Yorkers, every out of ten New Yorkers surveyed, nine of them rate three-one-one a ten, right? Which means that-
Vicky Palladino today.
Yeah, Vicky Palladino and the good councilmember Holden, right?
He goes back and forth. He's, he's not a ten. I know this for a fact.
Well, the ten only refers to the agent's response to the call that come in versus the, the agency responds to calls. So most people are satisfied with three-one-one agents today. I'd say for us, for the quality of life complaints and the quality of life information requests, if we could serve that information out faster and we can use AI to help us do that, that would be great. As it stands right now, with the staffing levels that we have, it would be great to have that staff focus on more or more substantive calls so that they can get to people that need information, real informational service requests quicker. And if we could serve the information up about general services that the city has in an easier, more dig- digestible way, it'll give our agency, our agents the capabilities of doing just that.
The three-one, three-one-one agents?
Three-one-one agents, correct.
Got it. I'm glad, I'm glad we're talking about three-one-one very briefly. I know that prior to, to me and, and the last administration back in twenty-eighteen, prior, prior to your leadership, OTI had issued this report, this feasibility, feasibility report based on a legislation, really to determine like, is it, is it feasible to use a centralized, single web portal? You know, the, the results of that report, if I'm, if I'm not, if I'm not wrong, was that three-one, that leveraging three-one-one online as the city's single web portal is the optimal solution. Again, this was back in twenty-eighteen. Does the My City portal use any of the infrastructure from three-one-one?
And so the My City infrastructure is, is, it stands outside of the three-one-one universe, but things like content databases and things along that lines, it uses some of that. What I'd say from twenty-eighteen in that report, when Henry Ford was building a car, at the time, everyone said if they could get something, what they could get and they wanted a faster horse. And I think at that time, people's predict, capability to see the future and the thing that we could deliver may have been limited. And I, I'd say through My City in a very short span of time, based on the multi-agency, multi-jurisdictional effort, we've shown that getting there is not only achievable, but i- it's, it's achievable in, you know, in a decent amount of time and it's going to require a lot of energy and effort to, to make sure that we stay, stay in that path.
So there's no, I guess because I, I, I think that there's a lot of potential overlap and similarities with three-one-one and like the future of, of My City, all with the goal of like providing a service, directing New Yorkers, making things easier, improving quality of life. So what, what, I guess, what are, what are some, what are some of the, like the infrastructure that three-one-one currently has that maybe you're think, that you currently use or you're thinking about? And how do you, we're not going to do away with three-one-one. How do you plan on like, it seems like quality of life is important, is important to the agency and important to like the, the success of this portal. How do you see that, those kind of marry, that marriage happening or living together? And then the distinction being clear enough for, for New Yorkers to understand three-one-one is here, My City is here. I don't have to create a profile here, I have to create a profile here.
So three-one-one is about anonymity. Should you choose to have, should you choose to want it? Or being able to submit a request around something that is impacting quality of life? So a pothole in the street, noise complaints, things along that lines, clearly within the three-one-one umbrella. My City is geared towards services rendered by the city. You need, you need subsidies, you need access to licensing and permitting, you need something from the city that you have to apply and the city has to render to you. That's the difference between the two. One is something isn't right or something is, is impacting me to some degree. And the other one is I need something so that I can do something. And those are the two, that's how the worlds are separated. I think that out of the success that we had out of three-one-one, we've got a lot of, a lot of information around design, a lot of information around usability, a lot of information around what the public expects. And I think but under the covers, things like geolocation and addresses, using common engines in the background so that we do that consistently. I think that's one area where things are shared. But outside of that, the three-on-one service model is very different than what My City stands positioned to do. And in areas where we can learn and we can complement what's already been delivered, we will.
Can you share, just, just backing up a little bit with, with MocaFi, who you, you said not necessarily a partner in, in like the phase of digital wallet for My City. But I, as I understand it, they are, the city is in contract with them for a demonstration proj- project, correct?
Uh, I'm, apologies, sorry, one more time?
The city is in agreement with MocaFi, wh- for, for what's considered a demonstration project, along with a number of other demonstration projects.
That, that was correct.
Okay. Do you have a sense of how many demonstration projects are, are in place?
So in across the city and across all agencies, it's, it's hard for me to quantify that.
OTI.
Within OTI itself, I would have to get back to you with that specific number. Because a demonstration project could be as significant as having cost value or it could be as, as insignificant of one person testing one technology in a single, in a single space. So in order to quantify that, if I gave you any number, it wouldn't be a full accurate representation of what may be in space, but I can certainly get back to you on that.
Do, sorry, I can't hear in here. For the, the existing demonstration projects, can you share, sorry?
Oh, the existing demo, I, I just want clarification. When you say demonstration project, is it explicit to one demonstration project or are you saying the entire universe?
Just the universe within OTI. Because we're, we're also just starting to kind of get information about it at the council, so.
Okay.
It's fairly new, so I'm asking like very preliminary questions.
Okay, okay, good, good, good.
For, for the demonstration projects within OTI, which I understand could be a lot, is there data from the My City portal or any other personal data that the agency is collecting? Is any of that data being utilized for the execution of the demonstration, of, of demonstration projects?
So in general with demonstration projects, depending on the size and scale of them, some of them are deployed in a, a universe where they have access to limited or no information and some of them may be deployed in a universe where they have access to some information. And I'm not saying My City information, I'm just saying information in general. In this case, in order to answer that question accurately, I would need to get a full catalog of what's in place and I can come back and provide an answer if any of that stuff is, is in place. One of the things that I'd also mention in terms of demonstration projects or any project that's engaged, there's an NDA, a non-disclosure agreement for any city data that's being used in any one of the tests or pilots to ensure that they're not used beyond the scope of the pilot and they're not shared outside of the city without, without the city's express permission.
Okay. And I thank you for, for emphasizing that. But you cannot confirm at this time if there's information from My City, like individuals' information that is being utilized?
To, to the best of my knowledge, at this moment in time, I, I can't say that I can think of a single one of those initiatives where that's the case. But as I said, to provide a more holistic answer, I would have to do a full assessment of everything.
Okay, okay. I look forward to that. Thank you. And then just on any kind of data sharing by vendors of the My City portal, do, is that happening with any, any and all of the vendors for My City? Is there data sharing happening?
Any data sharing of anything that comes out of the My City portal is shared between the agencies that are responsible for rendering the services. We do not share constituent data out publicly to any partner outside of the use case that it was initially submitted for.
And is the information being shared vendor to vendor?
The vendor to vendor, there's, the vendors, the vendors themselves have no specific business need to have direct access to information outside of facilitating transfers between agencies. The information for the My City system live, for the My City application, lives within the systems themselves and they're not purged or pulled out of the systems to be shared between vendors for any, any purpose.
Okay. And that's in their contracts? That's in their contracts?
That's in their contracts.
Okay. Do you have any more questions, councilmember Holden? No. Okay. I think, I think maybe outside of a few other follow-ups that we can get to you and some of the information on, on vendors and the specific data. Give me one second. Give me one second, we just had the state senator here.
No problem.
Sorry. Can I, so we're just, I wanted to give some time to state Senator Gonzalez, who I know wanted to testify, but is it okay with just two more questions? I know I sounded like I was done.
Sure thing.
Can you share if there's any role that My City's backend plays in, I think, in, in, in agency-to-agency data sharing or coordination of that?
Yeah, for, for sure. So between the agencies, especially for benefits rendering, if there's information that's required to be shared between agencies, there are MOUs in place that, that govern the specific use of data and the purpose for which that information is being shared. And any information that, that's shared is covered in that space. We also have privacy riders and addendums that, that allot, that align to the use of that information. So I think for us, in general, any information that's shared, again, we are the facilitators of building the technology. The specific business agreements between the agencies of how they use the information in it is shared between the agencies.
Okay. Will the, i- i- is, I mean, is there an MOU with PD, with NYPD to access?
Not, not at this moment.
No, okay, okay. Is there anything, any reason or anything related to, you know, as someone's creating a profile and as you all are analyzing and launching the common services, potentially a scenario where you're utilizing someone's information about substance abuse or anything like that? Is there, is there a, a future where this kind of very personal information could be shared with PD at their request?
Unless the NYPD becomes in the business of answer of starting daycare facilities and childcare, we're not, we're not, there's no-
We just want to be very careful about how we're protecting people's, you know, personal information and I think so much of, of what I'm hearing about the future of My City is like seeing where people need help and connecting them to that help. So I just want to be very, very specific and very careful about how we integrate law enforcement, for example, in some of these instances. And, and you can, I think, also understand why, why some New Yorkers want to, want to share some information for this fear.
Yeah, I, I, I can definitely understand that concern. And one of the reasons why we have a chief privacy officer for the city and that privacy officer sits outside of any specific entity, it's responsible for overseeing privacy across the city, is, is for that point, to ensure that we're not biased in any way by any specific agency's mission. And it's done at a level where we're overseeing what's best for our constituents, not for the agency, that's requesting the information.
That's right. I'm glad, it's on, it's on the record. I appreciate that. Thank you. So I think we're going to wrap up with questions. I know, I know that you probably have to leave, but if you can stay, uh, just a couple moments or your team can stay for the public testimony. I'm just going to open the hearing for public testimony. I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. And when recognized, you'll have three minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, My City Portal and Intro eight-twenty-one. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of the testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You can also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Within seventy-two hours of this hearing, audio and video recordings will not be accepted. Now I'd like to welcome New York State Senator Kristen Gonzalez, the Chair of the Internet and Technology Committee in New York Senate. Come on down. Hi. Good to see you.
Phenomenal job on, on the questioning and I just like it on the record that this committee in the city council is in very good hands.
They're the team, the team gets all the credit. Thank you, Senator. You can get started whenever you want.
Fantastic. Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez, for inviting me to share my statement at today's hearing. I am New York State Senator Kristen Gonzalez, representing Senate District fifty-nine, which consists of parts of Western Queens, Northern Brooklyn, and the East Side of Manhattan. As Chair of the Senate Internet Committee on Internet Technology, I passed legislation on government use of artificial intelligence this session through both houses of the New York State Legislature. At a time when trust in government and our democracy is at a low, it is of the utmost importance that any government use of technology be reliable. However, despite warnings from experts that generative AI tools cannot be trusted to give accurate information in consequential contexts, the My City chatbot was rolled out in October of twenty-twenty-three. Let me make one thing abundantly clear. New York City made a major error in releasing the My City chatbot. Using public dollars to deploy a chatbot that gives inaccurate information is exactly why we need clear regulation on government use of artificial intelligence prior to deployment. This is not the first time, however, that this administration has invested in untested experimental tools that have failed to deliver on their promises. In September twenty-twenty-three, Mayor Adams announced the K-five security robot to patrol the Times Square subway station. We don't know what it did, if anything. And this robot that Mayor Adams said would be part of the fabric of our subway system was retired by February of twenty-twenty-four. Mayor Adams also pushed for an one deployment of the Evolve AI-powered weapon detection system in subways, despite company warnings that technology would not work well in our transit system. On top of this, Evolve has been sued by their shareholders and is under a federal investigation for discrepancies between what they say about their technology and what it can actually do. New Yorkers deserve better. We deserve technology that has been tested and is of the highest possible quality. We deserve our public dollars to be used to maximize public good. We deserve an administration that will be responsive to these concerns. Instead, Mayor Adams refuses to take down this faulty tool because he claims it needs to be in public hands to iron out the kinks and that this is how it's done in tech. I am here today to send a very clear message that how it's done in tech is certainly not how it should be done in government. Our lives should not be made worse so that a product can be made better. That is poor technology product development and more importantly, poor governance. Good technology is thoughtfully designed and thoroughly tested to minimize its negative impacts and to demonstrably improve lives. Just as we rigorously test any other new tool before it is deployed, we must hold these new technologies to the same standards. I look forward to continuing to work on legislation on this issue and working across levels of government to ensure that our, that our city and state government prioritizes safety and responsibility in technology.
I think often refers to kind of like what is already existing. Seems like they've not really engaged in a ton of feedback besides maybe like a survey situation. So I mean, what I, what I got clear from the Commissioner are, are MOUs, agency-to-agency. Obviously, I was asking specifically about law enforcement. He couldn't really speak to that a lot. So I'm really, I'm encouraged that constituents are asking about that. Is there, are there, I guess, specific concerns about kind of the future? And you can get back to me with this because it sounds like they're really looking at a sense of like, kind of predictive services with the information that people are, are supplying? Is, do you think that there is concern for what he laid out or what they laid out today, which is, we want to see what services people need so we can provide solutions versus kind of like what you're hearing on the ground? What, what people really, do they really need that?
That's a phenomenal question. So I think we can all agree that we want to see our technology stack in our city and state government, be responsive, be easy to use, you know, from a, from a New Yorker perspective, also give us the information that we need. But deploying new tools that are untested certainly isn't the answer to that. And what I really wanted to point out to your question is that the, the question of automated, automated decision-making systems having implicit bias is one that we've been dealing with in our city and state governments for years. And now that we're adding new types of technology like generative AI and large language models, which again have been proven to have certain challenges and hallucinate, you know, we have the risk to actually amplify some of that bias. And what we've seen in other states is that when these tools, whether an automated decision-making system that did not have a clear, again, a framework mandated by government to reduce bias, or a generative AI-based tool, and definitely in the latter right here, we've actually seen when these tools have been deployed, some serious issues, like folks losing some of their benefits because the decisions were inaccurate and folks being accused of things like fraud in other states because the systems were actually flagging people unnecessarily. And that's why we want to see, before we go ahead and do any of this, that we have clear standards and at least a human in the loop when a consequential decision is being made about someone's life with an AI-based tool.
That's right. Yeah. Well, the administration seems very hopeful they will figure this chatbot situation out. But thank you so much for coming and thank you for your testimony.
Thank you so much for having me and again, appreciate the conversations today around the, the digital identity wallet.
You're welcome anytime.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Next side, uh, next panel, I would like to call up Cynthia Conti-Cook, Dejanira Del Rio, Kim Moscaritolo. Those are the three names for this panel. Hi.
Good morning.
Hi. You can start.
Okay. Thank you to Chair Gutierrez and to the other members of the Tech Committee for holding this critical hearing. My name is Cynthia Conti-Cook and I'm the Director of Research and Policy at the Surveillance Resistance Lab. We've been researching MyCity and speaking with a variety of stakeholders over the past year. We urge the City Council to stop, question, and assess the costs and serious risks associated with MyCity and prevent this administration from undermining local governance by fostering increasingly opaque procurement processes in the name of pro-industry innovation and getting stuff done. We need to stop MyCity because thus far its purpose and design have been decided behind closed doors by cops and corporate tech, and now also because of critical questions about potential corruption. We need to question the intent of MyCity because this highly consequential digital infrastructure has been built alongside moves to embed NYPD officials throughout city agencies, regardless of data sharing and regardless of data sharing agreements. And this will impact city government far beyond this administration. We need to assess the potential consequential costs and harm MyCity may inflict on low-income immigrant, criminalized New Yorkers, communities of color, and anyone receiving public benefits, mental health or substance addiction services through city agencies, and how MyCity will enable digital stop and frisk and create an inescapable digital cop city. MyCity must be stopped. It is a clear example of what happens when cops and corporations occupy central decision-making roles and are able to design durable infrastructure without public oversight. Just last week, this administration moved to make demonstration project procurement even less transparent and accountable to the public. The Comptroller's Representative and a former Chief Procurement Officer both opposed it. This is why My, MyCity must be questioned. It is being built behind a blue wall of silence by corporate contractors. We must question how law enforcement will collect, share, and use the MyCity portal because we know that the corporate vendors contracted to do so will not stop or question them. For decades, the priorities, personnel, and power of the NYPD has transformed our city government. And while the NYPD's mission creep has been growing for decades, never before has an administration of this city so aggressively sought to expand the power of police even farther into all aspects of city government. We question whether this administration has held the boundaries between corporations, police, and civilian agencies and their data. This is why MyCity must also be assessed. Are the unknown climbing costs of MyCity included in the $225 million price tag for Cop City? What are the costs to our digital dignity, tax dollars, and democracy of building a digital cop city? If we want to use digital tools to enhance benefits access to New Yorkers, how can we do that while still protecting their identifying information from police and data brokers, especially when NYPD is embedding their officials throughout city agencies and corporations are digging their claws into infrastructure through demonstration projects?
Thank you. We have your testimony, right?
You do.
Okay. The longer one. Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today on behalf of New Economy Project. And thank you for shining a light on the very important issues and serious risks that this proposed project could present for, for New Yorkers and for highlighting the many unanswered questions about how this program will be designed to ensure New Yorkers' privacy and safety are, are fully protected. New Economy Project has since 1995 worked with community groups and low-income New Yorkers throughout the city to fight bank redlining, predatory lending, and other forms of racial wealth extraction and discrimination in our financial system and broader economy. Increasingly, our work focuses on fintech, financial technology companies that claim to expand access to banking services, while in fact, they are further entrenching inequality in our financial system and often serving to exploit unmet needs by low-income New Yorkers and communities rather than equitably meeting those needs. And so we want to encourage you to make sure that you are clear-eyed about this digital wallet proposal and really be skeptical of these claims that this is about expanding access for unbanked New Yorkers and to address banking deserts. We, I wanted to just focus on the digital wallet in my testimony briefly. First, I want to say that back in 2018, our organization and joined with dozens of others across the city to fight back and defeat a similar proposal in which the administration then was proposing to add a financial technology chip to New York City's municipal ID cards, our ID NYC cards. And this would have exposed low-income immigrant, unhoused New Yorkers and others to serious risks of surveillance and data collection and so much more. This MyCity now proposal of integrating and potentially requiring people to tap into and participate in this fintech digital wallet raises many of the same risks and concerns that advocates raised at that time. And also similarly, would risk chilling New Yorkers' uptake of city services if they had to subject themselves to such risks. I want to just make a couple of very quick points about fintech. One is that fintech is predicated, this industry is really predicated on the business model, it's built on a business model of widespread collection and often sale of people's personal data. This is not incidental. It's not a, a side effect. This is built into that model. And, oh my gosh, my eye, my vision. And so we want to make sure that, in this case, that it's very clear that MyCity's integration with an array of city services could mean that a wealth of people's sensitive information, including their financial history, personal identification numbers, and much more, could be concentrated into one place, creating a sort of a, a huge portal of data over which the city would have very little control. I want to raise a couple of quick points. Sunrise Banks is a very important player in this as the bank that partners with Mocify. Mocify is the technology fintech company, but it partners with Sunrise Banks to, to manage and actually provide whatever financial services are it, are provided. Sunrise Banks is not on the list of banks that are designated to hold New York City deposits or to do business with the city, which means that they haven't gone, undertaken the application process, the evaluation, and the oversight that banks are required to do to do business with the city. So in the absence of that, we would ask what kind of scrutiny, what due diligence has the city conducted to ensure that, that it's, it's, that this is a right approach? And finally, New York City is home to community development credit unions, to responsible lenders and financial institutions. If the city wants to incorporate a equitable and a fair way of expanding banking access to New Yorkers, we have those institutions and the city can partner with and strengthen those institutions. It can advance public banking for which there is a strong movement in the city. It can take other steps to make a real difference that doesn't entail steering New Yorkers to high-cost and often predatory fintech companies.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hello. My name is Kim Moscaritolo. I'm the Director of Communications and Advocacy for Hunger-Free America. I am here to speak on behalf of the estimated 1.28 million city residents who now struggle against hunger. So we at HFA, we are not technology experts, nor are we fintech experts certainly, but every day, our dedicated staff who deal with benefits access work with struggling families to help them apply for and receive the benefits that they so desperately need. And so we see the difficulties that they face and the pain and frustration that they suffer because of this really laborious process. So while it is true that it is easier to apply for multiple benefits in New York City than in much of the rest of the state, it's still a really onerous process to obtain those benefits. Rather than being able to apply for multiple benefits at one time, low-income New Yorkers are often forced to spend countless hours traveling to and waiting at social services offices or spending long times on calls, waiting to be served, taking time away from work and raising their children. And if their employer pays by the hour, they often lose wages to do so. So we have actually long championed the idea of a MyCity portal, which then candidate Eric Adams said would create a single portal for all city services and benefits. But when the portal finally launched in 2023, as was discussed earlier, it only offered eligibility screenings and applications for the childcare benefits. And even now, New Yorkers who need to apply for SNAP, cash assistance, and Medicaid renewal are directed to the separate Access HRA website. So our position on this is that in principle, we do very much support the idea of allowing people, particularly low-income people, the opportunity to apply for multiple benefits at one time because it is extremely difficult for them to have to go through this process with multiple agencies, many of which require the same amount of information about them. Something like ninety percent of the information that you need to apply for all these benefits is roughly the same. And we know that there are the technology challenges. We know there were issues that were brought up earlier in this hearing related to concerns about privacy. And, and those are all very fair concerns, but we do believe that the potential upsides for the city, once the portal is fully implemented, could be great. It could save countless time and money for struggling New Yorkers, could decrease the burden on city workers, and improve the local economy because people who receive these benefits will almost certainly use them in local city businesses. So we do believe that the City Council and the city should do everything it can to properly and fully implement the, the promise of the MyCity portal, which would make life for low-income New Yorkers who need these benefits much easier. We would also suggest that the Council formally endorse the Congressional and State Hope Act bills, which would make it easier for people to apply for these multiple benefits online. But we hope that you work to address the delays in implementing the portal fully so that it can help more New Yorkers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. I have a couple of questions that I just want to make sure that we include for, for the record. So my first couple of questions will be for Elena and Dejanira, and then I got one for you. So I'm clear that there is more concern for the future of MyCity, the way information is being captured, the purpose, the efficacy, than, than hope for this being a useful tool for, for New Yorkers. In a world where MyCity does exist, how do you think, what should be removed? What do you think it needs to look like and operate to be the tool where New Yorkers can go online and just get information? If, if that, if you can envision a world where that is true? What needs to happen for MyCity to, to be better and useful?
If the purpose of the-
Oh, if you could turn it on. Thank you.
Thank you. If the purpose of the tool is just to receive information, then that's much more simple. What we're concerned about is a tool that is collecting information from New Yorkers about their households, about their dependents. As the Commissioner listed off this morning, there's many layers of information that's collected from people as they apply for benefits, as they apply for childcare. And our questions and our concerns really stem from what happens when all of that information is collected together in one place that doesn't have strong boundaries between what that information was collected for and what it is being used for. And at the moment, data sharing agreements aside, we already heard from a report last week, again, this was not, this was only in the public's eye because there was, there was media reporting on it, that an internal memo indicated an intention for NYPD officers to be embedded in city agencies across city government. And if that is the case and city, NYPD officials would then be able to get access to such data, we have concerns about what then the purpose of that data, which was collected for a different purpose, is going to be used for, especially in a world where automated systems are kicking people off benefits that they are eligible for, where fraud detection predictive algorithms are wrongly accusing people of fraud, and where the, the, the push for innovation and where the push for efficiency and down and, and lowering staff counts is resulting in replacing long-term, unionized, experienced workers instead with algorithms that just don't have the context, don't have the local expertise, and don't have the central purpose being making sure that people who deserve benefits get it and instead have a central purpose of policing.
Are there other cities or other communities where you've seen kind of these worst-case scenarios?
Yes, absolutely. There have been lawsuits in Arkansas about a home healthcare app, a home healthcare system that was used to reduce the number of home healthcare hours someone was entitled to. There is another lawsuit out of Idaho, similarly about healthcare, and another one from Michigan where there was an automated fraud detection services used, and it was used, ninety-five percent of the time, it was producing wrong accusations of fraud.
And Dejanira, I know you, you raised a really good point about existing financial institutions that are community-based, that in many ways try to- And if that is the case and city, NYPD officials would then be able to get access to such data, we have concerns about what then the purpose of that data, which was collected for a different purpose, is going to be used for, especially in a world where automated systems are kicking people off benefits that they are eligible for, where fraud detection predictive algorithms are wrongly accusing people of fraud, and where the, the, the push for innovation and where the push for efficiency and down and, and lowering staff counts is resulting in replacing long-term unionized experienced workers instead with algorithms that just don't have the context, don't have the local expertise and don't have the central purpose being making sure that people who deserve benefits get it and instead have a central purpose of policing.
Are there other cities or other communities where you've seen kind of these worst-case scenarios?
Yes, absolutely. There have been lawsuits in Arkansas about a home healthcare app, a home healthcare system that was used to reduce the number of home healthcare hours someone was entitled to. There is another lawsuit out of Idaho, similarly about healthcare, and another one from Michigan where there was an automated fraud detection services used and it was used, 95% of the time it was producing wrong accusations of fraud.
And Dejanita, I know you, you raised a really good point about existing financial institutions that are community-based, that in many ways try to right the wrongs of discriminatory lending practices and redlining. Do you think that there is a future for, for the design and rollout of the digital wallet where it is incorporating any of these like core values of community institutions or no?
We do. I mean, I would say that just to start in terms of the, the MyCity design or what that could look like, just a first step would just be making sure that there are real, meaningful opportunities for public input into the design so that we could hear directly, the city can hear what concerns people would have and hear their reactions and make sure it's very clear what is being envisioned in terms of the collection of data and the sharing of that data. I think also consulting with experts who are not from the for-profit corporations that stand to gain from this project, but consulting with mission-aligned experts in technology that are concerned about the growth, the concentration of, of data and, and the lack of control that people have over it at times. I would also say that, you know, I found it very concerning that the Commissioner talked about people having to read disclosures to understand how their data would be used when we know that very few people do that. And there's just such a sheer imbalance of power and information. Do we expect public assistance applicants to read that and make a decision about whether they need to apply for benefits based on, you know, the, the disclosures that are in, you know, four-point font? I would hope not. I think we need to, I think the city should make a clear commitment to making sure that as a matter of policy, any systems portals that they create, the city creates must protect people's privacy to the highest standard. Otherwise, we're, you know, the city is steering people into, you know, a profit-driven system that isn't going to serve the, the public interest. And finally, to your point, yes, there are, you know, the city right now has entered into another contract with Mokafi to issue immediate response cards to migrant asylum seekers with Mokafi. And some of the community development credit unions that have long-served immigrants, undocumented, documented, and other historically redlined communities have said they wish that they had been approached by the city because many of those institutions are already serving these asylum seekers, not just with a prepaid card, but offering an array of one-on-one support, help sending funds back home, applying for tax identification numbers and providing full holistic services, not just a card that they can use to swipe and, and generate funds for the fintech company. And then in the long run, the city should create its own public bank through which it can administer a lot of these services directly rather than having to look to for-profit partnerships.
Yeah, that's so true. If for a long time, the credit unions were the only institutions banking with undocumented New Yorkers whose only ID was ID NYC. So absolutely. Is there any, is it possible to deliver services efficiently without centralizing, centralizing data?
That's a great question, and, and I think that those are definitely questions and conversations that should happen with technologists who can answer it with a lot more detail and context than, than certainly I can. But the, the issue from a perspective of governance is that at the moment, there is no way for people to understand what the boundaries are between how their data is used. And if it is used for multiple purposes, there needs to be more access to that. We don't want to be in this hall five years from now demanding a bill about transparency reports for how many times the NYPD has accessed data through the MyCity portal. I think that what we need to be clear about from our perspective is what boundaries are we setting up and not just setting up and hoping that, you know, ethical companies comply, but laws and clear categorical bans on particular use cases if the data is collected from a benefits applicant, if the data is collected from someone who's going to city services for mental health treatment, for substance use treatment. In those cases, people need to have the assurance that their information is not going to turn around and be used to police them.
Thank you. And for Kim? Thank you so much for your thoughtful testimony. I think a lot of what you highlighted here is kind of the, the hope that we had, a, a lot of folks had about what a one-stop, you know, centralized portal could do to improve access for, for folks. I am most intimately familiar with Access HRA. I have that app on my phone. You know, I, I know it was a big undertaking. Have you heard specific feedback from, from folks that you all serve or from just folks on your team maybe about the, the usefulness of someone using MyCity portal, for example, to apply for, for EBT or for cash assistance or food, for example?
So, yeah, I mean, with the caveat that I, I don't do the direct service work, so this is just what I hear from, from our staff. I mean, my understanding is that currently the usability of MyCity in particular is fairly limited. So the work that we do primarily is with SNAP and WIC access, which my understanding is not currently available via the MyCity portal. It is accessible through other avenues through city agencies. But the feedback, you know, that we often get from folks is the number of barriers that are in place for folks receiving their benefits and the frustration with, you know, spending a tremendous amount of time filling out forms to apply for, say, SNAP and then realizing that there may be other benefits that they're eligible for, that they need to apply for separately and basically fill out 90 to 95% of the same information, just on a separate form to a separate agency, potentially having to go in person to meet with people, you know, to have their information verified, which always, you know, includes potentially taking time off work, having to find childcare, which is extremely difficult. So, you know, we look at it from a perspective of, of course, you know, we want to limit the barriers that people face to accessing these benefits. If there are significant trust issues, if there are concerns about privacy issues which have been raised during this hearing, of course, then that lack of trust will lead to fewer people utilizing the application and that, of course, is exactly what we don't want. So yes, the process needs to be transparent, you know, it needs to be done in a way that engenders trust in communities, particularly communities where we have newly arrived immigrants, folks for whom English is not their first language, because these are the communities often most impacted by poverty and hunger who really need these benefits. But, you know, from our perspective, doing predominantly the SNAP and WIC outreach that we do, probably, you know, the, the largest thing that we hear from folks is not specifically about a specific city application or portal so much as just the frustration with the amount of time that it takes first to apply and then to receive those benefits. And I realize that, you know, the, the time that it takes to process those applications does not fall under the purview of the technology office that, you know, has to do with the workers who are processing those applications and getting them through. So that may be a whole, you know, separate department and a whole separate hearing. But that is the thing that is most frustrating. So our message really is just getting these people access to these benefits is the most important thing and anything that we can do to make that process easier and more seamless for those folks is, you know, that that is what the city and the city council needs to be focused on.
I, I think the, and thank you so much, but I think that, that responsibility should be shared with OTI about the timeliness of processing. I mean, they're, they're promoting this, this portal as improving quality of life. The Commissioner emphasized this multiple times and it really is a shared responsibility. So I think this notion of like, well, we just have the tool and the agents, it's up to the agency to prove, uh, process and we have nothing to do with it, I don't think is justifiable. And I think that there should be way more initiative on their half to be able to bridge that connection. Again, your average New Yorker that is going through the motions of setting up a portal does not want to hear that OTI is not responsible for processing their application. That's just not real. And if they were engaging with people, they would 100% know that. I just have one more question, thank you again, I just have one more question. In your opinion, do you think that the current New York City privacy law is doing enough to protect our, our, our data and our data privacy, excuse me?
It's not clear that, that it's being enforced. I think that there's an actually pretty comprehensive identifying information protection in New York City. It's not clear that this administration is respecting or, or adhering to its restrictions or adhering to the principles under it as it is rolling out MyCity and the digital wallet as well. I would also just mention that this administration has gone to Albany to fight for the One City Act, which is a bill that would permit for cities over 1 million, pretty broad data sharing permissions. And that bill itself actually contemplates a police use case for the purposes of being able to police the subways. And so it's clear that the care coordination and inter-agency data sharing that's being contemplated by this administration is specific, specifically being contemplated, not just for the purposes of using force to remove people from the subways and voluntarily hospitalizing people, but it's also being contemplated as the administration tries to spread out the NYPD through other city agencies to also enforce non-criminal violations, including city rules and regulations. And so we have very serious concerns about the One City Act as well and what it would actually, how it would actually undermine New York City's otherwise very clear identifying information protections.
Thank you. And could you, do you want to comment on the changes in the PPB rules related to demonstration projects? The Commissioner barely, you know, did not touch on it a whole lot, but...
Yes, I would. So last week, the Procurement Policy Board did a rule, passed a rule change, although it was opposed, it was passed three to two. The procurement project rule change would allow demonstration project procurement to be used without public notice, without public oversight. It would allow it to be expanded upon without the kind of evaluation and more rigorous, or it's, it's not terribly rigorous to begin with. Demonstration projects are supposed to be an exception to the rule where you pilot something and see how it works before you decide to engage with contracts in it. The current expansion of demonstration project procurement, which was really driven by industry and the, you know, love of innovation and getting stuff done, the limitation on that for New Yorkers is that we know less about what is actually being contracted. There's no RFP, it is not competitive, and it allows companies to really get a head start against other companies. It allows companies to go in and gather data through city infrastructure, which is a very valuable ability for a company to have. And once they exclusively are capable of building a technology tool based on the data that they've collected, using, getting the advantage of the city infrastructure they've been able to access through demonstration project pilots, they are then really well-positioned to be the most competitive bidder. We've seen this with ShotSpotter, we've seen this with Mokafi and the digital wallets, and we're currently looking at all of the demonstration projects to evaluate just how many exist and get a better idea of the full scope of how this really opaque procurement process is replacing and undermining local governance.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you so much for testifying and for sticking it out. Thank you all. Next panel, we have Christopher Leon Johnson and Raoul Rivera.
Can I speak?
Yes, you can start.
Hey, hey Chair Gutierrez, Christopher Leon Johnson, the record. I want to speak, I know that, I don't know if Yusuf Salam was here, he should be removed as the committee counsel chair because he's a lying bastard. I'll tell him his face. But let me say this right now, why does the, the OTI Commissioner have security detail? Everybody knows he does. I think you should have a hearing with one agency, I don't know which, I know Yusuf Salam don't want, it's scared of shaking apple cart. You need to ask this OTI Commissioner, like, why does he have a security detail? I'd assume with a security detail outside city hall, city hall. This is getting, Adams is a liar, Eric Adams is a known liar, that's why he's in this situation right now, and I'm calling him for resign from, as mayor. Why does this OTI Commissioner has a security detail? I think you should ask him that question. I'm gonna put this in the record, I'm gonna send to your office in Williamsburg, I'm gonna go there like tomorrow or Wednesday, I'm gonna send, I'm gonna send inquiry. I think you should have a hearing, like a special hearing with the, and ask these guys like, why does he have a security detail? He's lying, Adams administration is lying about the OTI Commissioner having, not having a security detail, he does. They have NYPD badges, they have firearms, they act as staffers, assistants, I just saw one outside with him. Let me see how much time left? How much time left? All right, minute thirty-four seconds. Okay, so MyPortal, I believe is a good, is a good tool to use, put everything at one point. I don't know why was the last panel complaining about all this woke crap? Is, if, everybody has smartphone these days, everybody has smartphones, especially with the help of, what's this thing, ACP and the, the free phone program? You can easy access it. If you know how to access booty shaking videos, I, I know, and, and Warstar Hip Hop, then you should be able to access, know how to access the My, the My, MyPortal app. I think that, to be honest with you, 55 seconds on the clock, that for every phone that the city, that the government supplies in the city, they should be able to automatically upload, it should be automatic on the app when you, when you get the phones, when you get the phone. Every city, like city council, every type of governmental app should be on this phone, should be on the government-owned phones. But in this 30 seconds, like I said, Gutierrez, I will go to your office tomorrow. I know I'm not doing it right now, I respect you, but I'll go to your office and I'm gonna submit an inquiry to have a hearing with the OTI Commissioner. Again, probably like ask him a question next time, like, what justifies you having a NYPD security detail that acts as assistants, calm people? And you see them at the parades, you see them at the, the flag raisings with their badges out and their guns out and their community friends also is with them. So that's all I gotta say, I gotta go to this hearing right now in the Housing Committee before they cut off, but thank you, take care.
Good, Christopher, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Good afternoon. I want to start off with a, with a quote that I, that I created a few years ago. I'm a big fan of technology, I love technology. Humans first, technology second, today, tomorrow, forever. I'll repeat, humans first, technology second, today, tomorrow, forever. Technology can be very helpful and can be very dangerous. We just, I tried to link up with the Commissioner that was here to technology and he spoke for like two hours and we tried to link up with his office, I tried to speak to his people, not one had a business card. So I think about that, we, we're talking about technology, but they can't even have a little piece of paper. I, I do, I have, I have information, I have a dot card, so I have, you know, I can give out my information. I'm the founder of NYC Drivers Unite, I'm a taxi driver, I have over 23,000 trips with Uber and Lyft. People may think that Uber is a cab company or, or cab base, but actually they go on the technology, that's why we're here today. And we just testify on Friday about the exploitation of Uber. Drivers are getting deactivated at will with no recourse. They, they try to get reactivated by responding to emails, they can't speak to an actual person. So we, we spoke to, to the Chair and we spoke to the Commissioner and we spoke to Josh Gold from, from Uber and we told them that we, basically we want Uber deactivated from New York. They can deactivate thousands of drivers. Why can't, as a city, we deactivate Uber? We can deactivate Uber? They're not, they're not doing the right thing for, for the people of New York City. I'm a driver. They're exploiting people of color, right? You want to protect people of color? 90% of the drivers are immigrants with a language barrier and they're, they're losing their livelihoods, they're just getting deactivated. I know a driver that just reached out to me who had, he had 29,000 trips with Uber. You know how hard that is to do? 29,000 trips with Uber? Somebody made a small complaint and he was gone. Now he's out of business, but he has a new vehicle that he has to pay for. So, you know, with technology, you have to be very careful, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna call for the deactivations, we've been putting videos out. I don't know who listens in this city anymore, you know, the things that are happening here. We have to, we have to advocate, we have to edit our videos, we have to be, we have to do everything. So right now, we're calling for the elimination of Uber from the App Store and we want them deactivated from the city. We spoke to the Commissioner and I told him there is a solution and the solution is to revoke Uber's license. And then we got all these groups, these Taxi Workers Alliance and IDG, they say all kinds of things and they draft bills here and there, but they never say, remove Uber. Yeah? Go hard or go home. We want to deactivate Uber from New York City. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Next panel, we have Shelby Lohr from the Daycare Council of New York. Shelby, you can get started when you want. Shelby, you can get started when you want. Just make sure the mic is on.
Hello? Okay. Thank you, Chair Gutierrez and the Committee on Technology for holding this hearing on the MyCity portal. The Daycare Council of New York is the membership organization of early childhood provider organizations in New York City. We provide early care and education at over 200 sites and neighborhoods across all five boroughs. And the Daycare Council of New York is a steering committee member of the Campaign for Children, and our recommendations in this testimony align with that coalition. The city must continue to work to make enrolling in childcare simpler for families. D C C N Y has been working with our member organizations to identify challenges facing families seeking childcare. Providers have indicated several ways to improve the MyPortal system to simplify the enrollment process for families. For parents seeking childcare, the portal contains some user design flaws. In particular, the city directs families to the official MyCity portal for assistance, but then reroutes them to other agency websites. For example, when families on public assistance are on the MyCity portal, they're referred to the Human Resource Administration. Foster care families are referred to their child welfare caseworker, and low-income families seeking vouchers are referred to the childcare enrollment application. Further applications for 3K and pre-K for all are not part of the MyCity portal. Instead, families seeking free school day 3K or pre-K must apply through DOE's MySchools application. At the same time, families interested in extended 3K or pre-K must first apply through MySchools, then separately through MyCity to confirm their eligibility. Creating a more integrated and single platform can help the portal achieve its stated purpose while increasing accessibility for families. Families interested in Head Start, Early Head Start, and Infant and Toddler programs face a different pathway to care and must enroll directly with their specific program. The Infant and Toddler programs then submit enrollment applications to the DOE for eligibility approval. The existence of multiple portals and multiple steps creates severe hurdles for families. Providers have also had negative experiences with the DOE's centralized enrollment process as it prevents them from accepting children on site, resulting in open seats that they cannot fill. This lack of flexibility has hindered contracted E C E providers from enrolling families on site and creating competition between contracted programs and those operated by the DOE in school settings. The Daycare Council of New York urges the city to address these issues to ensure that all families have access to quality E C E care that meets their needs. The MyCity portal should be consumer-centered and support a seamless application and enrollment process for all birth-to-five programming in New York City. We therefore recommend the following to improve the MyCity portal. Create a consumer-centered platform where the applicant need only know the age of the child they're seeking care for and provide basic demographics on residence and income levels of the household head. Ensure the portal interfaces with providers so that they can assist parents in applying and enrolling in services like full day, full year, or school day and school year, and connect them directly to open seats within a center or family childcare network. Ensure multilingual access to the platform and that the application is accessible to migrant families. This could include through offering a multilingual technical assistance phone number. Ensure application and enrollment for all birth-to-five E C E services can continue all year round. And there are a number of other recommendations, but you will see them soon when we submit the testimony. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Shelby. Please submit the testimony. We'd love to continue reading through the recommendations. And thank you so much for your thoughtful testimony. Have you heard similar, to what I've been hearing about processing times and the fact that, you know, people would, there's still 9,400 New Yorkers in the last year that submitted paper applications despite the success of the portal? Is that something that you're hearing where they're, they're choosing to do one, you know, the paper application versus the portal for maybe security reasons or just, just the length of time it takes?
Yeah, we have heard a lot of challenges with what is happening in terms of enrolled students and then what the actual portal expresses. So for example, we heard from one provider that said, "We have 28 kids who are enrolled, but then we get something from the portal that says that they're not, and then they get an email saying that they're not enrolled." So there's a lot of back and forth that if there's a better integration between the providers and the systems, it can help parents not be as confused and it helps providers not be as much on the, you know, trying to interface between the, the technology and the family. So there is a lot of delay and kind of a lack of communication despite many of the positive steps forward that the portal has been undergoing.
And have you heard from parents if they have any concerns about the kinds of information that's being asked for the screening or to even set up their profile?
Yes, absolutely. There are a number of families, particularly migrant families, that are concerned when they're applying. For example, if they need to provide information about who lives in their household or any details about birth certificates, or they're very afraid that they might give away somebody else in their family or any other kind of information that they don't want to apply at all. And also, it's just a little complicated with too many different places to apply. You don't know how to do it, and sometimes you can just say, well, I'll just try to figure something else out because it's too invasive and it's too confusing.
That happens, that happens often. Shelby, thank you so much. Thank you for testifying. I appreciate it. Now we're gonna turn to our witnesses joining us via Zoom. And first, we have Kate Brennan from AI Now.
Starting time.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez and members of the Committee on Technology. My name is Kate Brennan, and I'm the Associate Director at the AI Now Institute, a New York City-based policy organization shaping artificial intelligence in the public interest. My brief testimony today highlights three principal concerns we have with the MyCity portal's current trajectory, and in particular, the future vision of MyCity as a centralized predictive data platform. First, MyCity must not be used to justify and entrench big tech corporate interests in public infrastructure. Public AI projects like MyCity are currently designed to require partnering with large tech companies. For example, the city has already contracted with Microsoft AI to launch the MyCity chatbot. These companies have everything to gain from public investment. For one, they're enriched with more data to train and improve their models. And even where agencies don't contract with big tech firms directly, these firms benefit because they control all essential inputs in the AI supply chain, such as cloud computing, data centers, and foundation models. And what does this mean for the public? More opaque infrastructures for citizen surveillance. This concern is especially stark with the proposed MyCity digital wallets that allow government agencies and without proper safeguards, private companies to track how New Yorkers are spending their own money. These kinds of large government contracts only further worsen concentration of power in the tech industry, today widely understood to be bad for innovation, bad for security, and dangerous for democracy. Second, we cannot allow private firms to hide behind corporate secrecy laws and evade accountability when public AI projects fail. We've already seen this play out. The MyCity chatbot partnered with Microsoft and provided wrong and illegal information to New Yorkers. And crucially, when the city attempted to understand the chatbot's training data, Microsoft claimed that the data was proprietary to the vendor and evaded accountability, leaving government oversight committees in the dark. Third and finally, we must push back against the city's prioritization of outsourced contracts over in-house public tech jobs. We expand upon each of these concerns in our submitted written testimony, which we'll submit shortly after this. In conclusion, we must reject public investment in AI projects that line the pockets of large corporations at the expense of New Yorkers' privacy, autonomy, and jobs. This committee has the opportunity and responsibility to ensure that New York City invests in technology built by and for its people. Thank you so much.
Kate, thank you so much. Our next witness we have is Albert Fox Khan.
Starting time.
Thank you so much, Chair Gutierrez. My name is Albert Fox Khan. I'm the Executive Director of the Surveillance Technology Oversight Project. I'm also a practitioner in residence at NYU Law School. And it is just stunning that we are having to have this conversation today, that this city, which has so often claimed that it was going to hold itself accountable on AI, would go down this perilous path to a unvetted chatbot, which seems incapable of delivering anything that New Yorkers actually need, but also is able to convey proven incorrect statements and advise New Yorkers to break the law. This is technology that is not fit for purpose, that has no place in public life and should never have been deployed in the first place. But this is a mayor who remains committed to finding every opportunity to deploy new and untested technologies that transform our fellow residents into test subjects for new private ventures. I want to correct an important point that was, came during the administration's testimony, where they noted that there's a chief privacy officer for the city. What was not noted is that under public law 245 and 247 from 2017, the chief privacy officer's jurisdiction extends to almost every aspect of the city except the NYPD and law enforcement. The chief privacy officer has largely been stripped of the power to hold the agency that most imperils New Yorkers' privacy and to hold them accountable in any way when they do so. And so what we end up with are empty promises and unenforceable guarantees about the way that the increasing amounts of data collected from each of us will be weaponized against us. The truth is, there are no firm guarantees today about the limitations on those, on how that data is used. And furthermore, it's clear that the most important tools for banking access for New Yorkers today are not high-tech. They are not fintech. They are not some new startup. They are not some new AI-powered bot. They are simply ensuring access to credit unions, access to public banking, access to traditional financial services, and not some new for-profit venture. We have been fighting the inclusion of payment technology as part of the city ID for basically the entire existence of the Surveillance Technology Oversight Project. We should not have the MyCity app transform into a new form of digital credentialing, digital financial surveillance, or digital platforming. This is not a way to actually address any of the issues that New Yorkers face. And there are so many more modest technological upgrades that we could actually take on as a city to improve service delivery, to improve backend coordination, to make sure that our systems are actually operating effectively. Thank you for the time.
Al, thank you so much. And please, I don't know if you have a written testimony, but please feel free to share it. I had one question because I'm glad you brought, you brought it up about PD. Do you know how PD could access data from OTI in this instance? Is it through a request and access and MOU? The commissioner multiple times said to his knowledge, there was no known MOU with PD specifically. But do you know if that, if something as simple as an MOU is enough for PD? Or is there another, another way that they can access that information? You can, you can answer if you.
The, sorry, I wasn't able to unmute myself. So what we've seen historically is that the NYPD is actually often able to access municipal data without formal MOUs or formal agreements in place. Under the New York State P P P L, the law that's large, that governs a lot of that data access to other agencies, they've been able to get it through any number of informal arrangements. And the truth is that because of the political power that the police department wields at City Hall, we often see these informal access arrangements with other city agencies, documenting them, being able to sue over them. That's a much harder task. But, you know, the fact that there isn't a formal MOU, to me, that is not reassuring. If there was, in fact, like a forensic audit by an outside entity that was able to certify that the data had not been shared, that would go much further in providing real peace of mind. But, you know, the absence of a real enforcement mechanism isn't proof that the NYPD is actually not accessing that data.
Thank you. Thank you, Al. Next, we have Katie K from World Privacy Forum.
Starting time.
Chair Gutierrez and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to testify about MyCity. My name is Kate K. I'm Deputy Director of World Privacy Forum. We're a nonpartisan 501(c)(3) public interest research group focused on data use and privacy in complex technical and data ecosystems, such as AI, mobile apps, identity systems, and more. Expanding access to city services is a laudable goal, but without incorporating privacy and security by design throughout MyCity development to prevent unintended uses of data from MyCity, it could introduce data privacy risks and negative impacts for everyone using it, especially vulnerable communities. These risks include unconsented or undesirable sharing or exposure of data related to people's identity, housing, health, employment, income, immigration status, or business operations. Users' data could be accessed by bad actors or used for discriminatory algorithmic scores or decisions. To understand how policies and regulations apply, transparency and documentation are needed in the following areas. What specific city services and data systems will be integrated into MyCity? What vendors will enable technical processes such as identity verification, social media logins, AI chatbots, or payment systems? What information such as identity data, biometric data, or mobile location data will be used or shared through MyCity? Why and for how long? What MOU or agreement such as data sharing agreements exist for MyCity? And here are a few suggestions to ensure MyCity does not create privacy or discriminatory risks. All connections to external systems, including identity verification and social login systems, should be scrutinized according to privacy data and AI governance policies. Secondary or downstream uses of MyCity data, including by vendors, should be limited or prevented. Some digital banking and wallet systems offer people a false take-it-or-leave-it choice between permitting secondary use or of sharing, or sharing of their data and not getting the service at all. MyCity data with, MyCity data with no reason to be stored should be purged from all data systems. Without appropriate data agreements and use and sharing limits, connections between MyCity and external systems like identity or AI systems or social media platforms could allow unwanted data sharing or exposure of identity. World Privacy Forum urges the Technology Committee to launch a task force, which includes civil society groups and the people who will use the portal or app. The task force should provide recommendations for appropriate transparency disclosures and guardrails. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I'll be submitting written testimony.
Oh, excellent. I was just going to ask. I want to make sure we read through the recommendations. Thank you so much. Next, we have Kevin De Liban.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, Chair Gutierrez and the other members of the committee. My name is Kevin De Liban. I'm the founder of a new organization called Tectonic Justice to fight the grand level harms that artificial intelligence algorithms and related technologies cause low-income people. I come to this work after 12-plus years as a legal aid attorney in Arkansas, whose specialty was public benefits involving at points the integration of these various eligibility systems. The short version is beware, run the other way, this is a warning, the sky is falling, and all of the other good things. Similar projects, oftentimes headed by, you know, large private vendors in various other states, have resulted in enormous failures. And these states vary. It's not just Arkansas. It's Rhode Island. It's Colorado. It's Texas. Places of different sizes, different political climates, and everything else. And when they fail, the result is outstanding and unsupportable human suffering, right? People who are unable to get benefits so that they can buy food or get healthcare or do any of the other things that they need to survive. So these are incredibly high-risk uses. There hasn't been an instance yet where a jurisdiction has successfully somehow overhauled their eligibility and enrollment system to integrate multiple applications without it entailing significant risks and failures. If this is the path that New York City is gonna go down, I have some, I guess, cautionary guidance. One is making sure that the problem is defined and scoped in detail. What is it that you're actually trying to solve? What problems? Is this technology capable, then, of solving that problem in a way that is efficient, effective, fair, not harmful, and cost-effective? If you can't commit, or if you're gonna go this way, will you commit to the resources to minimize the harm and ensure proper oversight? That means making sure agencies have the sophistication necessary to interrogate vendors, contract well, run all sorts of tests and projections, consulting community members that are gonna be affected in an ongoing way that actually enables them to have power and to participate meaningfully. Importantly, it's necessary as part of this to have extensive public reporting and forcing the agency to answer questions that might not be answered. the agency to answer questions that might not be answered in their own internal documents and the things that they choose to make publicly available. Of course, freedom of information laws have to be strong around this so that the public can have access to the information. There has to be pre-deployment testing, there has to be phased implementation so that it's not applied to everyone at the same point. You have to maintain the non-AI, the previous way of doing things so that you can turn that switch off and get people benefits the previous way. That concludes, I think, my three minutes. Happy to offer any additional information or answer any questions. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Kevin. Do you have specific examples of benefits being denied? Or what kind of benefits that were denied using a similar portal? Yes, he has to be unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so in Rhode Island, in, I think it was 2016 to 2018, massive SNAP and Medicaid failures. So I think at some point, 130,000 people on SNAP benefits lost their benefits. And then there was a backlog of 15,000 or 30,000 applications that took months and months to receive. You have in cases, right now with like unemployment, there are still cases in Michigan of people who are waiting four years for pandemic-era unemployment benefits that they were eligible for originally. Same situation in Florida and even to a lesser extent, I think, in Arkansas. So there's a lot of examples from all over the country about lost benefits. And those mean Medicaid, SNAP, and unemployment principally when it comes to state benefits. Few people outside of many places are on TANF anymore or Temporary Assistance for Needed Families, so that's, might be less impacted, but that's another benefit that's usually rolled into these sort of integrated, so-called integrated eligibility and enrollment systems.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Next witness is Clayton Banks, followed by Sarah Luria of Saint Nick's Alliance.
Starting time.
Hi. Able to see me or hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Well, Chair and members of the Technology Committee, thank you for the opportunity to address this important topic. And thanks, Irene. As a longtime advocate for digital equity, I am. I am a longtime advocate for digital equity and the closing of the digital divide. I commend the city for developing the MyCity portal, a tool that has the potential to be transformative for New Yorkers seeking access to essential services. However, however, for the portal to truly fulfill its mission of equity and empowerment, we must ensure it is accessible to all residents, regardless of their technology, resources, or digital literacy. So mobile app access, right? That's critical. Many New Yorkers, particularly those in underserved communities like in Harlem where I, I'm there all the time, a smartphone is their primary and sometimes only device for connecting to the internet. You get to what I'm saying. Internet is an issue here. An app allows these residents to access services on the go, receive notifications about deadlines, and complete simple tasks like checking application statuses. By making the MyCity portal accessible via mobile, we can reach those who may not have home broadband but rely on affordable mobile data plans. I'm getting to that broadband. On the other hand, web access through computers is just as essential. There are many tasks, from applying for housing assistance to uploading important documents, that are, that are better suited for a desktop experience. The larger screen, more advanced tools, and ability to multitask are crucial for certain users, including older adults and individuals who may struggle with mobile navigation. We must not forget that the digital divide is not just about internet access, but also about digital literacy. Ensuring that the portal is intuitive and user-friendly is as important as providing robust security features like multi-factor authentication, whether on mobile or desktop. Additionally, offering the platform in multiple languages will, will ensure that the New Yorkers, regardless of background, can benefit from these services. I also want to address the integration of NYC 311. I know that's happening. I'm glad to hear about that. And I'm just saying that because the biggest issue we have is getting every single home in our great city to have the internet. We cannot call ourselves the greatest city in the world if not someone has, if someone does not have the internet in their home. That's critical. It will work directly with MyCity. All that will work so much better. I urge the city council to prioritize both mobile and web access to the MyCity portal, ensuring it is accessible, secure, and inclusive for all. Thank you for your leadership. And of course, I think this is a great and important issue.
Thank you, Clayton. It's good to hear from you. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Sarah Luria from Saint Nick's Alliance.
Starting time.
Hi there. Good afternoon. My name is Sarah Luria. Before I start, I just want to say I appreciate all the discussion around privacy and data sharing, especially for historically marginalized folks. And thank you to the committee for continuing to do this critical work. Like I mentioned, I'm the Director of Workforce Operations at Saint Nick's Alliance. Saint Nick's Alliance Workforce Development Center launched a digital literacy for all initiative that was fueled by the pandemic and the growing importance of computer literacy to be successful in education in your room for jobs and successful career ladder development. As part of this effort, we recognize the growing need for digital literacy for all in our community. The services at Saint Nick's Alliance infuse digital literacy in employment, education, skills training, et cetera. We serve about 18,000 community members annually, and the center serves around 22,000, 2,200. Our tech training includes data analytics, IT help desk, and cybersecurity. We know that the MyCity platform incorporates the job and benefits feature that could truly potentially benefit our clients at Saint Nick's Alliance. And we recognize the importance of, you know, providing critical resources to ensure employment opportunities for historically marginalized folks, especially in North and Central Brooklyn. My question is, how can the MyCity platform and the, and the committee support community-based organizations who train folks in IT and tech roles to sort of have more opportunities in, in, through employment, specifically in the jobs and benefits feature? Thank you.
Sarah, thank you so much. Thanks for sticking it out and for your testimony. Appreciate it. If we, I think that wraps up the witnesses via Zoom. And if we have inadvertently missed anyone who has registered to testify today and has yet to have been called, please use the Zoom hand function and you'll be called in the order that your hand has been raised. Okay, no hands. Thank you, everyone, for your testimonies today. We hope that MyCity portal will indeed serve as a secure one-stop shop for city services and does not become a one-stop shop for sensitive data about New Yorkers. The hearing is adjourned.